Welcome to the November 5th, 2025 School Committee Meeting. Item 1.2, District Vision. The Barnstable Public Schools educates the whole child by creating a student-centered school culture that addresses students' physical, social, emotional, and academic needs by creating a safe and healthy learning environment in which students are challenged, supported, and engaged. Core Values. In Barnstable Public Schools, we value commitment, collaboration, and community. Commitment: We are dedicated to the continuous learning and growth for all. Collaboration: We work together while keeping student needs at the center of all decision-making. Community: We build strong, respectful partnerships that support student success. Item 1.3, Statement by the Chair. Video or audio recording of meeting. This School Committee meeting is being recorded and broadcast on the Town of Barnstable's Government Access Channel. In accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 20, the Chair must inquire whether anyone else is recording this meeting, and if so, to please make their presence known. Okay, thank you. Item 1.4, Pledge of Allegiance by our Barnstable United Elementary Students.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and the visible with liberty and justice for all.
So we have the pleasure of two Barnstable United Elementary students joining us tonight. Thank you for leading the pledge. Student Envoyes Kirill Ayarov and Giovanna Rivera are here to give us a report about what's going on at BUES.
Hi, my name is Kirill Ayarov. I am a 4th grade student at Barnstable United Elementary. I've been here for two months. I went to Centerville grades, kindergarten to 3rd grade. I was nervous because it was a big school. Even when I went on a tour, it still seemed big. Now that I'm in it, it seems like a normal-sized school. My teacher brings us everywhere we need to go. One difference is that I have two teachers now, Ms. Cole and Ms. Vashon. We also switch classes every morning for ELA and math. We switch for social studies and science, too. While switching classes takes time, I now have two teachers to help me. One thing I really like about BUES is that I made tons of friends. The gym is huge and PE is fun. The teachers are nice. All of the staff are ready to help you. It would be great if we had more grass on the field and bigger soccer nets. Lines would be really helpful, too. The school is perfect for me. I absolutely love it.
Good evening. My name is Giovanna Ribeiro. I'm a 5th grade student at Barnstable United Elementary School in Dr. Bird's class. Tonight, I wanted to inform the community about a part of our school-wide Positive Behavior Support System, or PBS. At our school of 724 students, we can be recognized and rewarded with SOARING tickets. SOARING tickets are little pieces of paper that any trusted adult at BUE can give a student. They are handed out to recognize students that are SOARING. The SOARING acronym stands for Safety, Ownership, Achievement, and Respect. Many adults at BUE have caught me SOARING. Most of my SOAR tickets have come from my homeroom and pod teacher, Dr. Bird and Ms. Ewald. I can also get them from my enrichment teachers. One time, I got one from helping a friend at recess, and I didn't even know who the adult was. But they saw me being respectful and caught me SOARING. You might wonder what happens once you get a SOARING ticket. Every Thursday, there is an announcement for homerooms to drop off their SOARING tickets for a raffle that takes place the next day. On Friday before the weekend starts, Mr. U pulls two names from each of our six houses. House A, B, and C are 4th grade houses, and Houses D, E, and F are 5th grade. So there are 12 winners every week. Mr. U uses his game show voice to announce the winners over the loudspeaker to the whole school. The winners who got caught SOARING then go to Mr. U's office to get a personalized certificate and a prize. Some students have few SOARING tickets and some have many. Once your tickets go into the bins organized by house, they do not leave unless one is picked. So if I have 25 tickets in House E bin and I get called, I will still have 24 left. I have never been called, but maybe this week will be my lucky week. The last thing to share about our SOARING tickets. Halfway through the year, at the end of the year, the houses in 4th grade and the houses in 5th grade that have the most SOARING tickets are rewarded with a special event. Right now, on November 5th, there are already thousands of SOARING tickets that have been earned. The purpose of our SOARING tickets is to help students get recognized for doing the right thing, even when they think no one is watching. Create a better and safer place for everyone. Thank you for letting me share tonight. I think that you have all been great listeners and deserve to be caught SOARING.
Okay, you better wait. Sometimes there's questions. Hold up. Jen?
And they're not done yet. They're gonna catch all of you SOARING, giving you certificates.
Oh. Wow. All right, now you sit down. They might ask, say, do you have any questions? All right, thank you. Jen?
Well, just a giant thank you. This is great. I've got all sorts of gifts to bring home and put on the fridge to remind myself to be good. You know, it's important this time of year, too, I might add. I always, this is where I always trip up. But I'm happy to hear you guys are having great educational experiences. That's what we're here for. So we love to hear not only the good stuff, but also the bad stuff. So as you get older and you want to complain more, which is what happens when you're a teenager, you can come to us then, too. Thank you.
You guys are fabulous. You're great diplomats for that school, great speakers for that school. Terrific job. Kirill, we'll have to see how that, gotta do something about the grass, huh? It's pretty easy to grow. Is it on the top field? Is that what you're talking, where you play soccer?
Uh-huh.
Huh. It's just probably from all the kids trampling over and stuff?
Exactly.
Yeah. Well, we'll see what you can do about that. And Giovanna, fabulous. Now I know what SOARING tickets are. Why don't we adopt something like that here at the School Committee? When I do something right, they're afraid I'll never get any. I appreciate you guys coming here. You guys were great. Thank you.
Likewise. Outstanding job. I did have some questions. I liked Kirill, how you talked about the transition that you made from Centerville. And the school seemed so big when you started, but over the course of time, it's gotten smaller and smaller, and you've gotten familiar using the gym, using the facility. So I'm thrilled to hear that at the start, even though it was a little bit of a challenging transition, you know, you're navigating it seamlessly. You're enjoying the big gymnasium?
Yeah.
And all the activities that go on in gym?
It's fun.
Oh, it's fun?
Yeah.
And we need to give some attention to our fields, that upper field.
Yeah.
And I was a history teacher, so before, and that's something that's very close to my heart. I'm glad that you give me this with your Red Hawks name and so on and forth. But if you can imagine, when that school first opened, it was a middle school. And we actually had a football field that played on that field. And I believe the first football team went undefeated. That played on that very football field. So it's a great field, and I'm glad you bring it to my attention that we can do a better job making sure that it's used. And then also, the field near the road. Do you get out there on occasion? For gym, the field when you're coming? Not so much. We're working on that field and getting it ready for the spring so that it can be used by yourself and the community. So I'm thrilled that you made a seamless transition and you're finding your groove, okay? And you're having success at the United School. Formerly Barnstable Marston Mills Middle School, now the United School. Glad to hear it.
Mike?
You guys did an unbelievable job. Most adults get up here and they usually, I'm usually the one they make, like, I usually like nod my head a little bit to like make them feel better because they just have that really scared look on their face. You didn't, you didn't have that look at all. You did awesome. Most, even me, if you ever watch any of these meetings, I tend to like mispronounce my words and I'm all over the place. So you did even better than me. Maybe we should swap spots and you guys can give me lessons on how to talk out in public. But excellent job and have a good night. Thank you for coming.
Thank you so much. The downside of going last is I have nothing to add to all the wonderful comments, but I appreciate you taking your time to come. It's great hearing about your school, and you're welcome back anytime. So have a good night.
You, too.
Do you want to get a photo?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Meetings.
Yep. All right, I'm gonna make eye contact with you, Mr. Judge, because I'm a little nervous. I'm not gonna do as well as the two students did.
Makes you a lot.
Okay, and then, well, this sounds good. Excellent. So my name's Justin Umla, Assistant Principal. This year, 5th grade at Barnstable United, and we loop, as all of you know, so next year I'll go down to 4th grade. But it's my honor to be here tonight and share our monthly core values, which really coincides with both what Kirill and Giovanna went over this morning. We sometimes, I think, at Barnstable United, get that reputation of being the huge school of 720, sometimes even more students. And Kirill, for example, I think he came from our smallest village K to 3 school. So to hear that authentic experience of him taking our building and really making it smaller, I think that that's awesome. Three years ago during my interview, Mr. Wachkowski asked, "How can we strategize to make it feel more like a tight-knit community?" And part of that is our house system that we've adopted at Barnstable United, and that will come up a couple times in this slideshow as well. So we often talk about ELA and social studies, math, and science curriculums, and embedded in that, right, like as a student, I reflect, and I was stronger in math, and I could struggle in ELA but still go into my math block and have a successful math block. But sometimes, often forgotten, not in the textbooks, is our core values. And if we don't have a solid foundation of these, we're really gonna struggle in all academic areas. So our core values that we're gonna go over, we do this to establish a shared language with all of our teachers, like Kirill so delicately mentioned, like he has two pod teachers now. So different expectations coming into a different school, seeing more adults that they're gonna be interacting with. So it's important that all adults are using the common language across the school. So we have our SOAR tickets, and we have the safety, ownership, achievement. But then we also have more monthly core values, too, that all work kind of in synergy with each other to have a good, safe, productive school day. Also with our core values, we're whole-child focused, so we teach the essential social, emotional skills that lead to success, not only in school, but in the greater community and as they get older into society. Always looking to have that common language shared at home, too, with the family partnerships as we reinforce these critical values. So how do we teach it? Really, we spread it all around, daily, monthly, yearly, in our schools. You'll see the SOARING tickets. A lot of the times, they'll end up in my washer machine because I have them in my pockets all the time. But all teachers, and I think that's important, our cafeteria staff, a paraprofessional, anybody that even that our students don't know are gonna recognize students for doing the right thing. But the core values are first brought up in our monthly house meetings. So at the beginning of every month, we have six assemblies, and each of those houses are comprised of six classes. So when you do the math, yeah, BUE is a really big school. But when you break it down in those house meetings, we have our six classes for House A, House B, House C, all 4th grade, and then three more assemblies individually for the House D, E, and F for our 5th grades. So for the month of September, hopefully my friends behind me remember, that was respect. October was ownership and responsibility, and this month is? Safety, right? So these are all important core values that we don't just hit once. We revisit over and over as the year goes on. So we have this house meeting, and then what? Daily on announcements that are brought up. As Giovanna explained, weekly, we recognize students, and like this picture on the slideshow, those are one particular house, so a student from each house that was recognized for great ownership for the month of October. All of those students in that house were not just chosen by the teacher, but also by their peers. So their peers are recognizing their counterparts for showing great ownership for the month of October. In addition to that, we have our school counseling support. Since my time in Barnstable, I've been blown away with how important we emphasize our school counseling. And going into BUE, it's just an amazing support system, having a counselor tied to each house. And again, they're reinforcing that common language and sometimes using it in a smaller setting to help students in peer-to-peer relationships, some mediation, always using our same language. So here's just a graphic that will kind of go over the layout of our core values. It starts by what are our 12 core values gonna be? I'm sorry, 11, because not in July. So we define what they're gonna be. I think when we get to the next slide, you'll say, yeah, if a student leaves 4th grade with mastery in these core values, they're gonna be awesome human beings going into 5th grade. And that's important, too, because in 4th grade, going into 5th grade, the house meetings have a different message because they've all had it all in 4th grade. So we try to do a little bit more scenario-based role-playing and how they would implement that core value in some different social situations. Also, our counselors are pushing into the general ed classrooms, modeling some of these skills with our second-step curriculum. And you might remember, last year, we had our student envoy go over the zones of regulation, right? And so this is all working in synergy to help our students with their character trait and development. So a very busy graphic here, but these are strategically planned as well, right? So if you look at responsibility and ownership as an assistant principal, this is one that I'm talking to the students with all the time because we are all going to make mistakes. I know when I was in 4th and 5th grade, I made mistakes, and I say this to the students. And the quicker we can take responsibility and ownership, we can learn from it. Another common talking point that I'll have with families is, yeah, there's great lessons in math class and ELA class, but some of the best lessons that we're gonna learn in at this 4th and 5th grade is when we make a mistake, how did we impact others? How did we impact the environment? And how can we act differently so it doesn't happen again? And it's great looping with these students to being able to see the growth from 4th to 5th grade. It's really impressive. I'm gonna reflect. Just last week, I had a 5th grade student that did make a mistake. They came into my office and they said, "Mr. U, I'm gonna be honest." Boom. Made the job so quick. And I said, "You know, I'm very proud of you. You made a mistake, and let's learn from it." But incredible, incredible ownership. So looking at how we also plan these out, March perseverance, right before MCAS. So perseverance is a great trait to be practicing at that point in time. And of course, June, Kirill, I promise you, that field will be ready for Field Day, the big one. And we go over sportsmanship for that, just so to strategically put these core values in at different points throughout the year. Again, our counseling department, and then just admin teams, classroom teachers, we are reinforcing these with families in weekly classroom newsletters, in our correspondence on emails out to the community, and then our individual conversations with families. So Kirill and Giovanna, I told you both to talk slow. I talked very fast because I was a little bit more nervous than you two. So what questions have I created for all of you?
Thank you. Jen?
Well, I don't know that I have a question as much as I have a comment. I think it's incredibly circumspect that we're talking about helping kids develop skills that most adults I know don't have. And in my day-to-day job, I, you know, cavalierly refer to them as broken toys, the people that I deal with sometimes, because they just can't communicate, because they don't own it when they mess up, because all of these huge life lessons weren't learned when they were kids.
Right.
So it's, I think it's excellent, and you're teeing them off to have a really great adulthood. So good job.
Thank you so much.
Well done. It's you that has the game show voice, is that correct? I'd love to hear it.
Good morning, Barnstable United!
All right. Very good. Very good. Your presentation was really impressive, and I especially like how the core values change every month. I think it's a great idea. Well done.
Thank you.
Yeah, let me concur with my colleagues. I like the focus on social, emotional growth, again, particularly given that this is a very big transition for our students from our area elementary schools into a large building. So there's gonna be some growing pains. As someone that teaches 3 to 5, you know, I'm aware of that age group and the energy that they have. My question, are we seeing a decrease in disciplinary actions, given the positive reinforcement that you are implementing via the social, emotional growth? Are you seeing less need for student discipline because these core values, this enthusiasm, right, in the school, what we used to call pride, honor, and respect?
Right.
Right? Is being instilled? Are you seeing less discipline?
So I think that what I'm seeing, a more noticeable difference is, especially in the 5th graders that have gone through the year of it already, is when there isn't infraction or a mistake, there is that more effective problem solving, right? So it's 5th and 4th graders at recess. So we understand that the Gaga pit, which I never knew existed before I moved to Cape Cod, so the Gaga pit can be a pretty volatile place, but also, like soccer can be very competitive. We're never gonna eliminate conflict out in a 5th grade soccer field, but what we can do is try to expedite the problem solving and how we go about that, right?
That's good to hear.
Yeah.
Mike?
How many? I just have one question. Excellent presentation. And I do remember the one last year, so it's kind of like dovetails on it. So how long has this been implemented at? I know you've only been there, this is your third year.
Yep.
Yeah, so was it implemented before you came three years ago, or is it something that's been introduced in the last couple, obviously, last year? In this year? Has it been in a couple of years? Do you know how long it's been going on, like they've been doing this for?
Yeah, so the first year, three years ago was the first year of the house system, right? And then each year, it's totally building on it and just getting more and more involved. And really, like, I've worked in some schools where you'll have a form of a SOARING ticket, but then you won't have the follow-through on other dynamics of it. And I think that there's so many pieces and parts that work together for this character development, and there's just fidelity with every staff member that's implementing it. So I've seen really positive changes in it.
Okay. So but this, the part that you went over, not the house part, the core values there, has that been, that's also, so it's all kind of came at the same time it's been going on for the three years?
Yeah, and I'll be honest, our monthly house meeting presentation, so Dr. Smith and I will run those, and we ad lib sometimes, but they're getting tighter and tighter each year that we do it.
Yeah, well, you're just kind of revamping it, learning from last year and kind of revamping it a little bit every year and make it a little bit better, which makes sense. I also like the fact that, like, 4th year is kind of like the overall of the different themes, and then the 5th grade, you kind of like delve into it a little more and like make it more real life.
Right.
Than just the words on a page, you know what I mean?
Right.
So, because sometimes the reading, like, the words on a page don't matter until you put it in practice and you see it in real life, and it's like, oh, that's what that meant. You know what I mean? So I like the fact that you kind of don't just do it 4th grade. Do the same thing for 5th graders, and they're like, we already saw this. You kind of change it up and make it more, sounds like real life, which is way more important. So thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I just have a question. So with your efforts that you're trying to bring home in school together, working together, have you received any feedback from the families on how the implementation at home is helping to foster the consistency?
Yeah, so that common language piece is huge. I think the first few times I had conversations with families of saying, like, oh, that was unexpected behavior, and they were not familiar with that terminology. But it's just driving that common piece home. And then another part that I forgot to mention, our school family liaison, who's incredible, Natalia Santana, this year before school started in late August, she did two community outreach events in our gymnasium, one for our Portuguese-speaking families and one for our Spanish-speaking families. And some of these slides were shared, and all of the core values were shared at that. So to really make sure that we are making sure that all of our stakeholders are understanding these.
That's great.
Yeah.
I've tried to adopt that unexpected behavior in my, in my own setting. I like that. Thank you so much.
Very welcome.
Important work. Thank you.
You, too. Thank you.
Public comment. Public comment will be limited to three minutes per individual and 30 minutes. Oh, I forgot. Student envoy, sorry. I missed the student envoy. I apologize. Come on up.
For those who don't know me, my name is Leah Reese, and I am a sophomore at the high school. And I have a, well, unfortunately, Kathleen and Caitlin could not make it to today's meeting, so sorry about that. So some notable events and happenings at the high school that I'd like to talk about are, so I'm a part of student council, and we have been beginning to implement, we have been beginning to implement Student of the Month. So starting this Friday, we will announce for each grade at the high school, two individuals to be recognized as the Student of the Month, and it will be reoccurring every month until the end of the year. And they are chosen through surveys given to teachers to recognize these individuals. And we will also be recognizing Teachers of the Month. So during lunches, we have students going up to Mr. Shea, and they acknowledge teachers that they believe are, like, kind or teach well, very knowledgeable, and such as those Another, another event that I'd like to acknowledge is a clothing drive that we will be running. So it is gonna, so we are accepting donations from all students, clothing, shoes, items of that matter, and we will be hosting a clothing thrift picking event. So it's gonna be kind of like a thrift shop event where either after school or during the day on a weekend, we haven't decided yet, students can come and kind of fill a bag up for $10 of clothes. So we are reusing clothes in a sustainable manner. So I'm actually really excited about that, and we hope that many other students that will be interested in coming and/or donating. Next, I'd like to acknowledge that boys' soccer, girls' field hockey, and girls' volleyball made it to their playoffs. So that was really great. And our football team is continuing to do really well this season. Also, everybody is particularly happy on the tennis courts being renovated. The only thing with that is many students who are involved in tennis are wondering if they will be ready for this season's tennis, like, because there has been some talk of potentially having to go maybe field trip to another school to use their tennis courts or find a different area while they are being renovated for practices. So hopefully, when we get to that, we could have a timeframe on when that would be done. Oh, alongside with the tennis courts, we have noticed that the cherry blossom trees were unfortunately cut down, which was really sad. I was also wondering if there would be, like, new trees being planted or of that similar species, because it's really nice in the spring to see the cherry blossoms. species, because it's really nice in the spring to see the cherry blossoms in the pop of color. Let me see what else I have. Oh, so then we also have the upcoming play that the theater is hosting, which is A Christmas Carol. The opening night is November 20th, so another exciting matter for the drama club. Typically, their plays are really successful, so. Next, I'd like to acknowledge that DECA has won an award slash a nomination for philanthropy night. So philanthropy night is being hosted on November 15th at a brunch, and many DECA members, including me, were interviewed to be, and were invited to come and accept the award. Lastly, quarter two has started, and we are looking into whether a honor celebration will be hosted for high honors and honor roll students. That is all I have to mention. Thank you.
All right, great. Jen?
Great job by yourself. Awesome. I'm shocked to hear the trees were cut down. I wonder what the story is behind that. Maybe the superintendent can help us.
So the footprint's expanding to be able to accommodate two pickleball courts, and so that did involve removal of trees. I did make note of the two items that you asked about, and I don't have an answer in terms of the timeframe, but can certainly talk to the director of facilities and get a response back to you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I know that Barnstable had a whole plant-a-tree thing going on. Maybe we could do something like that and replace the trees. That would be good. It's a great, thank you for noticing that. Like, I think it's really important that we have a beautiful landscape as well, so. Awesome job. Thanks.
I was going to say the same thing, Leah. Thank you for noticing that about the cherry blossoms. That was pretty good. Was that your own thing or someone came to you?
That was my own thing.
Well, that was a good thing.
Thank you.
Yeah, and very quickly, I'd just love to hear about the Student of the Month, the Teacher of the Month as well. And great to hear that a Christmas Carol's coming. I always love the plays there, so thank you very much for coming tonight. You did a great job by yourself. It's always the highlight of my night to hear from what's going on at the high school. Thank you.
Yeah, again, I'm going to concur. You mentioned a number of things that I'll be looking at in my school committee comments. I do a presentation, and you talked about a number of things that I'm going to be showing the community in just a short while. But you noted our boys' soccer team, field hockey team, and girls' volleyball team all advancing to the playoffs, which is exciting. And there's a football game on Friday at home, I believe.
Yes.
I believe they're playing Dougherty in their first home playoff game, and if they win that, they're scheduled to get another home playoff game, so I know there's going to be a number of students that are there. I saw that we had, like, a spirit week or a spirit day where there was a number of activities that went on in the high school. Again, that's going to be a part of my presentation coming up very shortly. Was that a good activity?
Yes, so the spirit week occurred our homecoming week. So spirit week had a lot of fun days, such as grandpas and grandmas versus the toddlers. So like, our seniors, so the seniors would dress up as seniors. It was really funny because some brought canes and wigs and stuff, and then the younger grades would, like, dress up as toddlers. And then we had Hawaiian Day, so like, Lays and Stuff, Pinkout, and that's all I can remember.
That's great to hear, and the images that I saw, I'm going to be sharing with the community, were just tremendous. I had a question just about the tone and the tenor of the school walking around, our facilities, our restrooms, you know, and students just feeling, you know? Again, I'm a Barnstable graduate, so I walk those halls, and I'm going to be in the building quite a bit, you know, a lot of great activities, celebration, which is at the end of the year, but we're already planning for that. How is it just in the building and using the facilities? I know that our staff is working very hard, and they're doing everything that they can, but just an update there.
The facilities as in the bathrooms? Okay, so the bathrooms are, well, the bathrooms can be clean at times, dirty others. It's really the environment of the bathrooms. Sometimes the locks are really hard to lock, or they don't work really well, especially in the locker rooms. Some of them don't have locks at all, but currently, they're at the same state as they usually are, but I do, I have noticed that they are been, they have been a bit cleaner.
That's good to hear, because again, that's something we're focused on, and I'm glad, you know, and we'll be focused on at our next meeting in December, just making sure.
Yeah.
Again, I'm a Barnstable graduate, so, you know, and I'm in the school. I just want to make sure students had a great experience, like I had.
Mike?
Excellent job. When did you find out you were coming tonight? That's all I want to know. Like, when did they spring this on you? And do they owe you something for coming tonight? Like?
No, no.
You don't have to answer it, that's okay. You did a great job.
Thank you.
It's hard, it's always hard, especially like, you're trying to do it from memory, and then like, you get, but you did a fantastic job, good job. They owe you definitely something. But yeah, excellent job, and thank you for the updates. Like, I did notice the trees too, and I was, but you were on it, so perfect. And I'm glad to see everything's kind of like, all the different things you talked about, but excellent, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Okay, so thank you so much. You explained how your students are selected for getting recognized. How do you select the teachers?
The teachers are mostly chosen just by students, just being like, oh, this is my favorite teacher, oh, I love this class, not necessarily like how the students are chosen, which is more meticulous.
All right, great. Thank you so much, and I'm sorry I skipped you. I realized I typed my notes in the wrong place from the last presentation and then just scrolled down, which is why I forgot, so I apologize.
Don't worry about it.
Have a great week.
Thank you, you too.
All right, so now we can have 3.2 public comment. Public comment will be limited to three minutes per individual and 30 minutes total. Public comment at a Barnstable School Committee meeting is limited to the town of Barnstable residents and taxpayers, Barnstable Public School employees, students, or family members. Speakers will be allowed up to three minutes to present their material and must begin their comments by stating their name and town. An extension of the speaker's time may be granted at the discretion of the chair. There will be no debate or action taken on public comment items. The committee will take items under advisement, or the individual will request an item to be placed on a future agenda. The chair will also allow public comment at her discretion during the meeting. Is anybody here for public comment? Sure, well, you can comment anytime.
So this might not be aware to everyone here, and I just want to say, and forgive me, I forget the high school student's name, but it was really incredible to see her calming the nerves of the fourth and fifth grade student before they went. Incredible. And then also, in that idea, the DECA program, that I think they've had one event so far at Barnstable United, the student engagement, the laughter, it was incredible to see. All of the parents were down in the main lobby while that was going on, and I was just saying, hey, they're all having a ball up there, so they'll be down when they're done. So whoever organized that from the high school, like, kudos, great job.
Thank you. Is anybody else here for public comment? All right, seeing no one, public comment is now closed. Item 3.3, School Committee Subcommittee and Liaison Reports. Facilities, did they meet? No, okay.
Point of information, I did have something from the facilities, some commentary for the community, thank you.
So hold on a second, please. Point of information means there's a mistake that happened at the meeting, so there's no point of information, of procedure?
Everyone was not allowed to speak during the, I had a contribution from the facility subcommittee, so I should have said point of order, because that's out of order. Everyone did not have the ability to speak. Point of order.
So the item 3.3 is for reporting on meetings that were held between the October school committee meeting, if a subcommittee met, and then the report is given today. If there wasn't a meeting, you can speak, you may speak, it just comes next. And so you're welcome to speak about facilities in item 3.4.
Point of order. 3.3 says, school committee, school committee subcommittee liaison reports. It doesn't say anything relative to a, it says reports. There's nothing about, we can't report if there was not a meeting, so I'm not sure why everyone on the subcommittee cannot speak to the issues that are affecting the community.
Because what you'd be doing is summarizing what happened at a meeting that didn't happen. So then instead of doing it at this point, you do it during the school committee comments. You still have, then it's your opinion only, and it doesn't include mine.
Actually, what I was going to be doing was commenting on pertinent issues relative to the facilities and as they affect the community. That's what I was.
And you could do it in the comments.
Going to be doing. But it's related to our facility subcommittee, so I was going to do it right now.
The committee, just a minute, please. Did the committee discuss what you're going to report on?
Yes, we did. So, thank you, Kathy.
Ben, we didn't meet.
Your other member wants to talk.
Yeah, very good. Of course, it's about the community, and that they're being informed. It's about the community, correct.
So, but we didn't meet, Andre, so you'll be mentioning it at the next point, when you talk about what you feel personally, because I wasn't a part of what you're going to talk about. So if you want to take credit for what you want to say, which I want you to do, then it'll be next, not in conjunction with the school committee, not in conjunction with our subcommittee that did not meet.
Thank you so much, Chair. What I was going to be referring to was something that we discussed at the previous meeting, that's very important to the community. So yes, it did happen at a meeting, and you were privy to it, and I was going to be informing the community of that matter. Am I now allowed to, my job, inform the community?
Point of order. Why wasn't that mentioned last month's meeting? If you met, you didn't meet this month, so if it was at the last month's meeting, then why didn't you mention that at last month's school committee meeting?
Good question, thank you so much, Mike. I did, and I'm going to continue to express that, as is my role as a school committee member, to inform the community. That's what I'm trying to do. Are you saying that you're going to prohibit me from informing the community of a pertinent matter related to facilities?
Andre, I'm just asking you to please wait so that committees that met can give a brief report about the meeting that was held between our October school committee meeting and tonight's meeting. If there is no meeting, then you can't say we met on whatever date and had a discussion because there was no committee meeting. You may speak in two minutes. It would have been done in speaking by now if you weren't arguing. So I'm asking that you please wait. You do not have the floor, and we'll deal with it later.
Point of order. So what you're saying, Chair, is you're going to violate the open meeting laws and not allow every school committee?
That's not correct.
Excuse me, I'm just asking, point of order, I have the floor, I'm asking the chair for clarification.
Well, you don't always stop whenever it says point of order to you, so why should I do that for you? Why should I give you the respect?
All right, let's take it down a notch.
The chair is saying that people can't speak during their affiliated?
Nobody has the floor right now. Nobody has the floor. You may speak and talk as long as you want about anything that you want when we get to the next item. Nobody is violating any open meeting laws because we're all sitting here in open meetings, so there's no violation, but you do not have the floor, so I'm just respectfully asking you to wait five minutes.
A point of order. Again, Chair, you are very close to an open meeting law violation by not allowing a committee member to speak.
Then file it.
And I just wanted to make you aware of that before.
That's all right, please file it.
Very good.
All right. The next item, the next meeting is Policy Subcommittee. The Policy Subcommittee met on October 27, reviewed the competency determination appearing later on the agenda, as well as the graduation requirements. There were eight other policies that were discussed for DESI updates, and for the sake of time, I will address those when they come up under Old Business and New Business. We do not have a meeting scheduled at this time, but as usual, if anybody has any policy issues, they should let Sarah know, or Kristen, or me, and we can deal with that. Wellness, or Cape Cod Collaborative, Andre?
No comments at this time, thank you.
Wellness Committee, Mike?
We did not meet.
Okay, and then C, PPI Leadership Team?
We did not meet. Did we meet? That was before, that was the last, that was in September we met, correct?
I think so.
Yeah, so no, there was no meeting this month.
Okay, thank you.
All right, item 3.4, School Committee Comments. Jen?
I'm fine, thank you.
Peter, last words?
Yes, I have some final last words here, and I wrote them down here, so this is about four or five minutes, is that okay?
You are in your.
Can I just preempt this with just telling the public that this is Peter's last meeting? Just for people who are like, what's going on? I just want everybody to realize, before Peter reads what he's got, that this is Peter's last meeting, so.
Yes.
Take it away, Peter.
Yes, thank you. My sincere congratulations first to Andre King and Courtney West for winning the election yesterday. I chose not to run, as I have Florida in mind, but I just have a few final thoughts for my last comments. First of all, I would like to thank all the members here for volunteering. This is a volunteer, not a job, but.
Adventure.
Adventure, yes, thank you, to serve on this committee. It takes a lot of time and effort to serve as a school committee member. I would especially like to thank Mike Judge, who served as chair when I first came on, and I would especially like to thank Kathy Bent, who serves as our current chair and does a fabulous job. The amount of time they have put into serving as the chair of this committee is truly admirable. The town of Barnstable is lucky to have both of them. Just a few concerns about our school system, and they're actually the same concerns I had, some of them are the same concerns I had when I ran four years ago. My first concern was keeping our Barnstable kids in the Barnstable school system, and to understand better why some of our Barnstable families choose to take their kids out of our schools and choose another option for their child's education. First of all, I think we need to promote all the successes, and there are plenty of them of our school system, better, and I know we're working on this. I know that, and that's a good thing. For me, just to attend a graduation ceremony and hear the successes of some of our students, it's truly rewarding. And I think we also need to do a better job of surveying those that choose to leave. We need to get detailed information from them. Once we get specific information, we make it public, then deal with the concerns and try to fix the issues. Currently, I think the information we get is a bit vague and kind of general, and often incomplete. This, I believe, should be a priority. I noticed that Andre mentioned literally the same concern in his candidate's bio in the Cape Cod Times, so I hope you carry the torch on this important topic, Andre. I also remain concerned about the opportunities we provide our top students. We do provide a ton of money and resources for our English-language learners and sped populations, and rightfully so. However, we need to dedicate ourselves to provide additional programs for our most talented kids as well, especially in the early years. We may run summer programs for many of our needy students, but why not specific programs for our gifted or talented student population? Based on my conversations in our community, the parents of our talented students are the parents who are often looking at other schools to meet their child's needs, because we are not meeting their needs. I hear the word rigor all the time being used to describe our standards and curriculum, so let's put this word rigor to clear use. I think this is a vital need for a healthy school system. Again, I noticed the same concern in Andre's bio, so it belongs to you now, Andre. If you provide for these top students, I think you begin to solve a main reason why kids choose to leave our system. I remain very concerned over MCAS scores. Based on my conversations with some of our administrators and staff, I feel as if they listen to me as if I'm being an old dinosaur who's living in the past, being concerned about MCAS scores. I often hear, the scores aren't needed for graduation anymore, so what's the point? Well, the point is, MCAS scores is a test the whole state of Massachusetts takes, and it shows how well our students score in relation to other towns. And if you don't think these scores have importance, simply go to Zillow and look up any house in Barnstable for sale, and included in this list is the homes, area schools, and their ratings. Well, how do they come up with a school's rating? Yes, they use standardized tests, MCAS scores. Currently, our school's ratings on these real estate websites are BWB, 4 out of 10, West Village is 7 out of 10, High West 2 out of 10, Centerville 7 out of 10, BIS 5 out of 10, BUES 3 out of 10, BHS 4 out of 10. We just simply need to improve these scores, and I believe we owe this to our taxpayers. I remain concerned over our buildings that are aging and all the work that is needed to maintain them. The maintenance is very costly. Either our town will need to dedicate additional dollars to help the schools maintain them, or we'll need an override for either a new school or renovate the or we'll need an override for either a new school or renovate the schools we have. Unfortunately, either option is probably not likely in my opinion, so something has to give in this regard. I remain concerned that we still have not come up with a policy that bans cell phones in our high school. We've been discussing this for over a year, but with no success. Towns and cities all across Massachusetts and the nation have figured this out, but not us as of yet. If we are truly serious about education, we need to require the undivided attention of our students. Nothing, I repeat, nothing gets the kids' attention faster than a notification on their phone. Cell phones are the most distracting devices ever created and are a harmful distraction that impacts emotional well-being and impedes a student's ability to learn. Now, on to the positive. What we have going for our school is a truly dedicated staff. My experience is conversing with staff throughout my term has almost always been on how can we improve the educational situation for our students. Our staff is truly a strength in our district. In addition, I believe we have a Superintendent that truly cares for our students and is focused on their success. As I may have mentioned before, Sarah wasn't my first choice for Superintendent when we held that search committee, but I can say that after four years of working with Sarah Ahern, we are very lucky to have her. I wish our new look School Committee is steadfast in its commitment to making our school system a better, more academic place to be. I wish you all the best of luck and I thank you for your civic service, and that's it for me.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. I do have slides in a presentation to go along with my comments. Before I get to them, I just wanted to thank Peter for his four years of service of being on the School Committee. You know, it's been kind of a whirlwind for me in that the election was yesterday and our meeting's today. I know that previously the School Committee had a gap between like when the election was and when the next meeting, so you didn't have to go right from an election right into the next meeting, but that's the circumstance that we have right now. And so, first of all, thanks to Peter, his four years of service. Ran against him, you know, he won clearly in our race by 200-plus votes, so he had the support of the community and, you know, if you wanted to stay, you'd probably, you still have that support. But, you know, this is a situation where we are elected volunteers. We're doing our best for the community. As you can see, right, we have open meeting laws and we have different views on how things are done, and so our meetings involve disagreement at times and they involve challenges. But you do it because you believe in the school district and you want to see the school district be the best it can be from whatever vantage point you're coming from. So cheers, congratulations, and best of luck in terms of what you're doing going forward.
Thank--
Indeed. In terms of my comments, I just wanted to note just one specific point. I had noted my concern relative to the facilities in, as a part of the campaign. That's something I'm going to be laser focused on during the next term and in terms of all the different options and being intentional about keeping the community informed about facilities and other big ticket items that we have in Barnstable. We should discuss everything. We should allow for items to be put on the agenda and discussed so that the community can get an up and down vote. That's how I feel, I feel strongly about it, and that's the way I'm going to be looking to do things again going forward. I wanted to note relative to facilities, the cost of our fields, the cost to the community to rent our facilities is something that is on my radar. I've heard the feedback. I'm aware that we need to have funds to keep things up, that's understandable. But I just wanted to note that our town manager, Mark Els, in speaking again about the use of town property for different events, noted that sometimes he'll say, you know something? No charge. No, we're not going to charge for the Barnstable Red Rally, not charging. Other events that take place in the town, specifically relative to the young people in the town, you know, he will factor in considerations when determining how much is paid. This is our town manager at a town council meeting. Our town council does a great job in terms of how it's run and in terms of their dialogues and everyone speaking and having the opportunity and a full-throated conversation, however long it takes. Do a great job, right? That's why we do this. School Committee, Town Council, nobody is, you know, investing their earnings, you know, if there are earnings, with Goldman Sachs. School Committee, we're elected volunteers. Town Council, you make us a particular stipend. Okay, but you do it, you have the conversations, you're in these meetings, as long as it, you know, obviously has to end sometime, but to get to the best possible conclusion. But I did want to note relative to facilities, it's not on the agenda this meeting, because again, the election was yesterday, I can't request things with one day's notice, but our youth organizations, our longstanding youth organizations for football, for basketball, for baseball, yes, you do need to pay for the fields, everybody pays. But a nonprofit that's based here in Barnstable with decades of experience helping Barnstable youth is different than a nonprofit from New York or Nevada or California or Maine or whoever wants to come and use our facilities for whatever activity they want to use. There's a difference there. And so that's a component of what we'll be looking at. We have macro issues to deal with relative to facilities, nine buildings, aging buildings. But our fields, their upkeep and what the community has to pay, making sure that it's reasonable, so we don't have good money after bad. Organizations aren't having to pay so much that they can't enroll more and more students. It makes no sense. So it's something that I'm looking forward to addressing. Thank you.
Mike?
I just want to say congratulations, Peter. You are an asset to--
Thank you.
--the Barnstable School Committee and the kids of Barnstable, to be honest with you. I have gone, I've been here for 10 years, I'm just starting my 11th year. I've had a lot of people come and go over my tenure, and I got to be honest with you, you're one of the, probably the top two people that I always have turned to as the Chair when I was the Chair and even now that I'm the Vice Chair and I've always, I've always, you've swayed me a lot more than you probably ever imagined. It's my respect for you. You're level-headed, you make a lot of sense, you're willing to talk and not yell and scream, you tend to be level-headed and you can have a rational conversation without flying off the handle on either side, but I, you are somebody who, it's funny, because when you got on, I did what, I was at like eight years, you would think I was the wily veteran, I'd been the Chair for two years already, and I honestly look to you as a new member to help me make some of those tough decisions as the Chair.
That was one of your big mistakes.
That's probably where I got in a lot of trouble. No, but honestly, you are one of those people that I've, like, in your four years, you don't know how much I respected your opinion and valued your input on even some matters that I didn't necessarily, I was coming into a meeting and I didn't necessarily agree with you, but having a conversation with you swayed me, or even if we didn't, even if it didn't sway me, you're still like, you were just a very, very valued member of this Committee more than you probably ever could imagine, and I thank you for your service as a Community Member. I thank you for your service and enjoy Florida.
I appreciate that, Mike. Thank you.
All right, and I echo his sentiments. I had the pleasure of also serving on the Policy Subcommittee with Peter, and so it was always great having his point of view. I think having been in the schools for as long as you did really brought a different viewpoint so that we weren't talking abstractly, so it's great. And might need to consult with you, I'm willing to go to Florida for some advice.
Thank you, Kathy. It was an honor to work with you, especially on the Policy Committee. You are an absolute whirlwind and a whiz, and I remember the first couple of meetings, I said, "What, what does this Committee even do? I don't even know." And, you know, you are just, you are the most organized person I've ever met in my life. I appreciate it. Thank you, Kathy.
I appreciate the compliment. All right, so good luck and we'll miss you.
I did have my slides.
I'm in the middle of my comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, my apologies, Chair. I thought you were closing--
So the reminder is that Barnstable Intermediate School is staffing the Bottle Redemption at the shed at the transfer station during the month of November, so we've got the great holiday at the end. Everybody can pack up their returnables and bring them. The funds are being used to subsidize the student cost for the trip this spring to Washington DC, and I believe Mr. Hurley has, is keeping a list of volunteers. I saw him on Sunday and after working all week serving our students in the schools, it's a little disappointing to see him by himself in the shed, so it doesn't take long to throw a few bottles in the correct bins and even an hour of time if you're taking your trash there is better than zero, so hopefully you can support this effort. He did tell me that the funds are being distributed equally by whoever signs up for the trip. It reduces the cost per student for every single person. There were a number of students who were working this weekend too. He had a huge list and shared those names. I want to mention that I did reach out recently to Seth Burdock, who's our Town Council Rep to School Committee. There are two Town Council Reps that we have as liaisons. It got comfortable being, he does watch all of our meetings during Zoom and, you know, takes in the information. We had a nice chat about how we can work together. It's an offset of the workshop that we did, trying to work more closely with the town as a united front to help all the town resources be allocated equally, equally by needs of the residents. So we continue to hope to have these conversations that will accomplish something, and it was great getting to know him a bit, so I look forward to that and to whoever is in the big shakeup when everybody has new Committees on the Town Council, we'll have a new rep. Our rep, the second rep didn't run. So, thank you, and I'm just going to ask so that, we have a number of people who work in the schools who have to present tonight. I'm going to request that the presentation just be moved so that they don't have to stay all night.
The presentation will be when, Kathy?
At the end of the meeting. We have no executive session tonight, so it shouldn't be as long as normal.
Very good.
All right. We're now on--
Can I just actually, just the thing about BIS, and Andre will understand this, because he used to come and help me at the shed when it was celebration, to do the can shed. I can't emphasize, I used to do it for years, I used to run it for celebration, the after prom party, and I think Peter showed up a couple of times and helped me too, and please go and help, please go and help. I mean, everybody was always like, "Oh, I'm dumping off cans," but it is, it's not a lot of work, it's actually kind of mindless and it's kind of, you kind of get the zone out as you're doing it, but to have Mr. Hurley work all week and then go and do that, please, I mean, he has what, 700 kids that go to that school, I can't believe parents can't help out. I'm calling, kind of calling you out on this one because Andre knows, because we used to, he came multiple times and helped me when I was sitting there by myself, and Peter came a couple of times, and please, like, this is going to lower the cost of going to Washington DC. Go for an hour, help him for an hour, help him bring a bag of cans and they just sit there and sort with them for an hour, so he doesn't, he can go home and, like, I can't, like, I mean, as Andre said multiple times and Peter said, "We're all volunteers up here." We put a ton of hours into this, so I do challenge people to volunteer for the community they live in, because you know what? That's what we do, all five of us. So please, help out with BIS if your kids go there and they're doing the Washington trip or where or not, please, just go and help them and let's knock down the cost of this for the kids. Thank you.
Item 3.5, Superintendent's Report.
Thank you. So I'd like to start my report tonight, talking a little bit about the Department of Education's review of the district back in April. I have a couple of slides to anchor the conversation. Those slides are in Board Docs, being shared with you. So the Department of Education reviews a selected number of districts periodically. The last review of Barnstable was in 2014. They came to Barnstable last April after we had spent several months putting together some documentation. They reviewed the district against six standards and indicators, including leadership and governance, curriculum and instruction assessment, HR and professional development, student support, and financial and asset management. They're not looking for compliance, that's the tiered focus monitoring reviews that we go through, so it's not regulatory compliance, it's rather kind of improvement efforts and best practices. The process included 26 hours of interviews with 84 stakeholders across a number of groups. They had focus groups with teachers, students, and families. They looked at a number of documents and our website. They conducted 91 classroom observations and there was a questionnaire completed by district leaders and principals. I just want to break down a few of their findings, strengths and areas for growth. All of this is summarized in a summative report, which is posted on the Department of Education's website. So in terms of leadership and governance, they recognize the School Committee for your systematic approach to updating your policy manual and its consistency with collective bargaining agreements, the law, and district priorities. They recognize the district for our use of school councils. They feel that our vision is widely shared and referenced across the district. We have a clear process for monitoring progress towards goals in the district improvement plan and that our school improvement plans include equity imperatives. They also commended the relationships between the Superintendent, myself, and the school community. Areas for growth, they have some recommendations and suggestions related to our engagement with CPAC and LPAC as parent councils, making sure that our school improvement plans are consistently using SMART goals based on a template that we have created. Leadership stability is something that they point as an area for growth, and increasing student voice in decision-making. In terms of curriculum and instruction, they noted that the elementary literacy and middle school level align with district improvement plans and our priorities, that we have put in place a structured process for curriculum selection and review, that we have dedicated time during our elementary and middle days to provide students with interventions and supports, that we provide students with an equitable access to a range of rigorous coursework at the middle and high school levels, and that the district is supporting a safe and supportive learning environment. Areas for growth have to do with ensuring that our district's instructional vision is widely shared, supporting the creation of instructional leadership teams at each school, and they would like to see a selected implement uniform, high-quality instructional materials across all content areas. That's going to take some time, but as you know, we have a process for that. And then implementing interventions to a greater degree at the high school. In terms of assessment, strength is collecting multiple data points and disaggregating to make decisions that our district's school and classroom leaders agree that there is a shared understanding of how data is used to inform strategic priorities and that we have systems and processes for communicating student achievement with families. Areas for growth include providing guidance for reviewing student data and facilitating regular cycles of data review, so building some more habits, and implementing consistent grading policies across schools. In the area of human resources and professional development, strength identified as having formal procedures for addressing staff grievances, that we implement several recruitment, retention, and advancement opportunities within the local community, and that we systematically incorporate feedback from PD opportunities, and you routinely hear about that from Kristen. Areas for growth include kind of communication and information with payroll, particularly if there's any issues that arise, ensuring that new staff are hired in a timely manner. We are working to expedite the processes behind the scenes, promoting individual educator growth based on walkthroughs, observations, and feedback, and establishing clear protocols for common planning time. In terms of student support, again, highlighting our safe and supportive learning environments, that we are implementing strategies to increase attendance and mitigate the effects of chronic absenteeism, that we offer shared district supports as well as differentiated school-based supports related to students' mental health and emotional well-being, and that we have strong community partnerships for wraparound services to students and families. They have suggestions related to developing more consistent policies and resources to address intensive behavioral issues, providing clear guidance for school leaders regarding how to implement each component of MTSS. how to implement each component of MTSS, and coming back again to those high school interventions, particularly for English language learners. One of the things that I took away is a lot of the areas for growth are things that we're working on. They'll manifest in the district improvement plan and school improvement plans. You'll hear many of our principals talk tonight about the MTSS process at their buildings. A lot of strengths noted in terms of financial and asset management, including the relationship with the town, that we have a budget process that's transparent and meaningful in terms of incorporating input from stakeholders. And they commended our savings account, which sits at over 10% of the district budget, in that we use a good tracking system to ensure the appropriate replacement and/or disposal of goods. The area for growth is around comprehensive, timely, and transparent maintenance services. And that is certainly something that we are working on. So I didn't feel like there were huge surprises. I felt like it was very validating of the work that we're doing that is underway. And then the recommendations are things that we will take into consideration or continue to aim to implement. Again, this isn't a compliance exercise. It's more a review to give us feedback around best practices. And that link has the full report, which is on the Department of Ed's website. Continuing on with my report, I want to note that Ms. Harmon and I are wearing our pins from BWB's second grade community service project. The second graders made pins for World Smile Day, which was October 3rd. Each student received a pin and the pins were sold for a dollar. Donations are going towards a scholarship for graduating BHS senior who attended BWB. So great job to our second graders, Ms. Corbett, Mrs. Napton, and Ms. Malillo, who facilitated that. Later on tonight, we'll talk a bit about our MCAS scores. And I know that there has been a lot of conversation about MCAS no longer counting for graduation at the high school in terms of a diploma, but it does still count and it does still matter for certain things like scholarships. And so I want to recognize that we have 76 students in the graduating class of 2026 earning the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship for their MCAS scores, which is actually consistent with previous years in terms of the number, roughly the percentage of students who are earning this. It provides a tuition credit for up to eight semesters of undergraduate education at a Massachusetts State College or university. Eligibility is based on the students' first-time scores on high school MCAS. So congratulations to our 76 scholarship earners if they enroll in a Massachusetts State School. We had two really exciting art awards happening over the past month for Hispanic and Latino Heritage Month. The Department of Elementary and Secondary Education held, or held a special exhibit. And Gabriela Dos Santos, who is a junior, was one of 12 students from across Massachusetts whose work is being celebrated by the department. Mr. Taylor, Brian Taylor is the teacher who submitted her work, and it was displayed and celebrated in the Department of Education's boardroom. I will have a picture of that in the community newsletter that'll be going out later this week. On October 22nd, all three of Barnstable Courts hosted a cultural appreciation event. Kairo Dos Santos, a senior at BHS, curated a student art exhibit that has been hanging in all three of the courthouses. The exhibit features over 40 works from BHS students and alumni. Many thanks to Donna Feinberg Rochwal, the head clerk of the probate court, and Mariana Fernandez, who works at the Superior Court and is a BHS alum. So some nice art recognitions across the district. I want to recognize our girls volleyball team, booster organization for their annual Dig Yellow fundraiser, also noting our very generous community. Each year, they raise funds to support a youngster and their family who is battling childhood cancer. This is in honor and memory of Olivia Brode, who had been a BHS volleyball player who passed away far too young. So this year, the recipient is a student of ours at BCIS. Her name is Eliza. And normally their goal is to raise around $3,000. They raised over $8,000 to support her family's expenses during this most difficult time. So they're just an amazing, heartwarming event that occurred a few weeks ago. And then lastly, I just want to give a big kudos to our guidance department. They had recently sent out a newsletter, and I just thought this was important, to share with the community. November 1st was the early action deadline for college applications. And they're noting that the class of 2026 has demonstrated tremendous initiative and focus in launching their college application journeys. They have processed as a team and the guidance department, 1,256 college applications, which includes 642 early action, seven early decision, 397 rolling admission, and 102 regular decision applications. This is 68% of all of the applications that they processed last year. So they are really moving a lot of college applications towards, for their, for their seniors, and we wish all of our seniors the best in their, in the admissions process. And then lastly, I will end with a thank you to Peter as well, recognizing that it is his, his last meeting. I am going to miss your sense of humor. That wasn't mentioned by any of your school committee colleagues yet, but I will miss your sense of humor. I thank you for all of the challenge and all of the support that you've given to me professionally. You have also made sure to recognize me as a person, particularly with some of the struggles I've had with my, with my dad as, in his later years. So I want to thank you for that.
I appreciate it very much. Thank you, Sarah.
I hope you stay in touch.
Of course.
Please don't be a stranger.
From sunny Florida, probably.
And we have a token of appreciation.
I want to know when the pickleball challenge is happening.
Are you going to become the pickleball champion of Florida?
I was so sad to hear about the cherry blossoms being taken down, but then I heard we had to make room for two pickleball court. And I won't comment any further. Thank you, Sarah.
Okay. Jen, questions, comments?
No, as usual, it's always a ton of information. I, I will say that my house is part of the reason that the guidance department is working so hard at submitting those college applications. We're cracking the whip every morning bright and early. But, you know, they are, they have been extremely helpful and, and they've hosted these FAFSA kind of, you know, meetings to help parents and everything else. I have to say that I personally had such PTSD about my father refusing to fill out the FAFSA and causing so much stress when my sister and I were applying to college that I was absolutely dreading it. Like, I yelled at everybody and made them leave the room and had to have perfect quiet. And it took me 22 minutes, soup to nuts, import from the IRS website. It was like, could not have been easier. I was out the door gardening, like, in, in like, literally 22 minutes. So if you have bad memories, like my sister and I have nightmares over the FAFSA, just take a deep breath, it's going to be okay. Other than that, I agree with a lot of the, the suggestions for improvement on the DESI report, and also a lot of the observations that are positive. I mean, we've got a lot of really good things going, so. And I'm sorry I didn't say happy last day to you.
No problem.
Evening, Jiang.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah. Yeah, in regard to the DESI district review, I agree this report is very validating. There's of course always room for growth, of course, but I think it highlights the strengths of our school system, so.
Andre? Yeah, for me, relative, thank you for this report, kind of looking at where, where we are relative to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education standards. In terms of human resources and PD, where are we at in terms of recruiting and retaining a staff that reflects our, our community? How did they, was that a component of the human resources and professional development? Again, our staffing?
It was, and there was some notation in there about our efforts to recruit. One of the strengths around recruiting from within the community was identified as a strength in the report. There is some more narrative in the report itself, and, you know, we have data to support, to support it from the Department of Education.
Did you, can you speak more? What was the data to support our, can you, can you, can you talk about?
Sure.
Again, to evidence that we are.
At the last.
Making progress in terms of recruiting and retaining a staff, high-quality staff that reflects the community?
So at the last school committee meeting, as part of my evidence, I included that we have doubled the number of Hispanic educators in the district.
Anything further?
That was, that's one example that I included. We have some data from this current year. I don't feel comfortable speaking to it right at the moment, off the cuff, but be happy to get back to you on that.
Well, thank you for noting that. Again, as a part of my presentation, I did note that there was an event in terms of our educator pathways over the month that the district took part in, that our state representative, Kippy Diggs, was also a member, a part of, talking about growing your own and the things that we're doing in the district.
Thank you for reminding me. We did that last, last Thursday, where we had a number of students from the educator pathway program join other students from interested school districts. Most of the districts on the Cape attended, and it was a field trip convening for those who want to go into education.
So that, that's, these are our very own students, and they're looking to go into education. They reflect our community. They want to come back to Barnstable, so that, I just wanted, that, that was a component of, that, that very important, that very important recruiting and retaining. Student support, family and community partnerships. I know I've been glad to see a number of, like the showcase nights that we have, the high school, you know, that, that you've implemented. Can you speak a little bit more, family and community?
I would want to make sure I give credit to the principals on that, but, you know, Tyler Arlington doing the BIS showcase last winter. I think they anticipate doing that again. And then Principal Friedman, and then with Principal Canetta doing the same kind of showcase at the high school to demonstrate all of the opportunities students have available to them.
And BUES as well. I remember seeing you at a family, I don't know if it was a showcase, this was last year or during the fall, or just an open house type of a?
We did, at the end of the year, we welcomed third-grade families in advance of fourth grade to BUES to learn about the school and walk around and see it.
That's a big transition.
Yeah.
In the district, so.
It is.
Very good.
So I, I, I'm going to kind of bring up a conversation that I had, and I'm not going to mention who I had it with, but I'm going to kind of, one of the things we got gigged on is a parent, parent involvement in with the, oh God, I just went blank. What do they call them at each school?
Parent advisory.
No, the parent advisory council, thank you. So one of the things that we used to do, and I know we got gigged by the state for the parent councils at each, each school has a parent council. And what we used to do is we used to have, back when I first got on the school committee, we used to have like a workshop before every school committee meeting. And what we would do is we would, one of the workshops is we would have the parent council come in. And I'm going to be completely honest with you, it wasn't very effective because you had every parent from every council come. You had the five of us, we had an hour. And to be completely honest with you, when I came to chair, I stopped doing it because it just wasn't effective. And shame on me, I didn't do something to, to replace it with. But one of the things that I, and actually, let me also step back. When I first got on the school committee, when I first got on school committee, I used to go to every one of those, once a month, I'd go to a different school's parent advisory council. And that was great, but it was only me. So it, there was a lot of questions that would come up at those, but it was only, there's five of us up here and none of us represent the entire committee. We are as a whole. No one person is greater than the others. So it kind of put me in a bind because I was there and it had nine million questions about stuff, and very, very valid questions that I wanted to answer, but I had to really kind of tiptoe around it because of, it's, all five of us get to put an opinion in, not just one person. So that didn't really work either. So then we tried the before workshop and that didn't really work. I just want to let the parent advisory councils know that we are talking about this, that this was something that I've had a conversation with a couple of people about. And we're looking at a solution on how we can kind of like, because those are the parents that are in each building. So they have the kids there and they talk with all of you guys. I'm pointing at the principals and like, it's, it's a great resource, but in my 10 years, there hasn't really been a way to like, have that interface. So we're kind of having that conversation and see like, and it'll come up to all of us to kind of make a decision on how we go forward with it. But it didn't fall on deaf ears that, and we're kind of like looking at, like, we're going, we're going to be having a conversation, public conversation about like how we can kind of include those with us. Because I'm all about the school committee needs to like get off the ivory tower and go down into the, into the, into the schools and into the kids and stuff like that. So I did a lot of that, and I've, like I said, a couple of different ways have happened and it just, it wasn't productive and it didn't really work. So, but that, that's one that I did want to just bring up to the public, that that is being kind of looked at from our level. Thank you, I'm sorry, Sarah. Excellent presentation. Thank you very much.
And I don't have any questions or comments, but to, I was in on that conversation with Mike, and we're trying to brainstorm different ways to help, you know, make that conversation. I have a question. It's a little out of context, but are, do any of the principals here, do they take notes, meeting notes or minutes at those, or are they more informal? So I'm wondering if maybe you could provide, provide those or if they're posted? Are they posted or are they, they're posted on each site?
Are you talking about a PTA or a school council?
No, I'm talking about the school council. Yeah. Yeah. The PTAs, we can, I think we can walk in and go to those because they're open to parents. Yeah. So if you have meeting notes, it'd be helpful because then we can share the meeting notes and we can at least be aware.
The only thing I'd be careful with that is like, people have to realize that they're going to come to us and then it becomes more of a public record. I just, I'd be kind of careful.
You don't know?
I don't know. I just, I don't want people to say something thinking it's a local meeting and then all of a sudden, next thing you know, it ends up at our level and then people asking records requests, like, I just, I don't know. I just think we just need to do more brainstorming on how to get it to, get more of that interface.
I assume everybody knows that if they do have a concern, they can go to Sarah and then if it involves us. I mean, we really have very little to do except as it relates to policy anyway and finance budget. So however, however we can help and stay in our lane, that's the big thing, stay in my lane. All right. Thank you. 3.6 Assistant Superintendent's Report.
Thank you. So I have a few items, one which does require slides, but that's actually my second item, so no rush, Mo. So I want to provide you with an update on our current curriculum review processes. We've got a K-5 math curriculum review going on and a secondary ELA curriculum review. And so as you heard from the district review summary, you know, we have a system in place, a review process in place that we've used for elementary ELA and for health, and now we've been able, and secondary math. And we're continuing that work and again, moving now into elementary math and secondary ELA. So the K-5 math curriculum review team has been meeting monthly since last spring. During that time, the group has identified the key priorities, our next math curriculum materials should, need to address, those criteria that we're looking for it to meet. These priorities were used as criteria by which math materials were reviewed, taking a deep dive into six programs that were identified by the curriculum council. The curriculum council, I believe there are 24, I'm going to say 24, 22 members, teacher representation across all of the elementary schools, some of our school leaders that are sitting in the audience. There is leader representation from each of the elementary schools, and then we also have special ed and ESL teachers as well on the team. So that group had identified sixteen, six programs for really a deep dive into each of the curriculum materials that were provided by the vendors that were then presented to the team, to the curriculum council, and was narrowed down to three programs that met the criteria. The three programs identified by the curriculum council were Reveal Math, Envision Math, and Eye Ready. So by the end of this week, those three programs will be narrowed down to the two programs that the district will be piloting. And the way in which that's happening, the narrowing to two, all K-5 staff have had access to sample materials and the deep dive slides. to sample materials, and the deep dive slides or information from the, those three programs, what was conducted by the Math Curriculum Council, that's all been shared with staff. They've been provided with a survey to complete, and once they have reviewed the materials and information, they would complete that survey to identify kind of their rank order of one, two, and three. Time has been provided in PLCs for staff to dig into the materials and to make their selection, or, or rank order, the three programs. From there, the next big steps are planning the pilot, which will begin the end of January, will be identifying teachers for the pilot. Principals will be sending out a communication in the next week or so, so that staff know if they're interested in being a pilot of the programs. And then there'll be a consensus meeting held in April, from which a recommendation will be made to the superintendent. And the May in service will be used for the program kickoff, for whichever program is adopted. So that's the elementary math. The secondary ELA curriculum review is gonna sound a little bit similar. We're a little further behind. If you recall, though, that was being funded by the PRISM grant, and so the PRISM grant, there was some delay in being notified about that, so we really didn't start the work until the summer. So we are on a slightly different timeline because of the funding and the approval, but the ELA Curriculum Council did start working in the summer. We have just completed all of our data collection of learning walks and surveys that will help inform the priorities for the program's selection. So we're a couple stages behind. We will begin digging into curriculum options toward the end of November, beginning of December, and then narrow those options to identify the two programs for piloting. Our pilot for ELA will start in February, and then as with elementary math, we will use the April in-service for our consensus meeting, and May for the implementation kickoff. I will continue, I'll continue to update you on the progress of the two curriculum reviews in the coming months. They probably will be, you know, slightly, you know, one ahead of the other, but I will keep you informed of where we're landing on the various curriculum reviews. PD feedback from October 10th, so that was one of the questions that came up around PD. So I did put together some quick slides. If you remember, as shared in my October comments, October, the October 1st School Committee meeting, the October 10th full day, in-service was a full day in service. It was an opportunity for staff choice in the PD. It was PD for staff, presented by staff. We had over 70 sessions offered by Barnstable educators for colleagues to select from. Staff could also sign up for sessions offered through the Collaborative's All Cape Day. I, I feel like this year's PD, full day PD yielded some of the most positive feedback from staff. I mean, it's always a big hit, it's always, you know, well received, but for some reason, it just felt like we really hit the mark with the options and the offerings. So a little data, I had 404 responses from staff. We had a couple different arrangements of this, so we offered morning sessions. So this is the feedback specific to the morning sessions. You'll see there's 313 respondents, but that's because that's just morning session only. We had people that also did full day. The, the blue and the red, I mean, that is your strongly agree and agree. You will see on all of the slides, and I actually had to go back a couple times to make sure that I didn't paste the wrong graph in, because all of them look the same. They were just super positive. So people really felt positive that their AM sessions provided them with skills and knowledge. They also felt strongly that the PD session should be offered again in the future. So that was for all of our morning sessions, just a really, really strong positive. For the afternoon sessions, very similar, again, really strong positive that these, they were getting their skills and knowledge, that they'd be able to directly apply to their daily practice. And again, strong positive that this should be offered again in the future. I am sharing the individual session feedback with, with the presenters that's happening right now. It's taken a little bit of time, but as we're sending that out, we're also asking if they would commit to offering their session next full day in service, and so far, we're 12 for 12, actually 13 for 13. And so hopefully, I mean, we still have more to go, but hopefully we'll see a lot of that, because they really were positively received. And then we did have a handful of full day sessions, and again, super positive. People really felt that they were in sessions that were supporting their skills and knowledge, and again, that they'd love to see these offered again in the future. There is a lot of open, not a lot of open response, but there's an open response question that asks, you know, what would you suggest for the future for this, or what did you feel was a benefit from this? And so I turned it into a Word cloud for you to take a look at, but you can see choice is just so strong. That is what people were looking for. They really wanted the choice. I like seeing that it was the best PD. I like seeing the thank you. I mean, really, that opportunity to work with colleagues. You will notice coffee shows up there. So that was one of the suggestions, is, is, no, that we offer coffee. So this, that was our recommendation, is that we start offering coffee. So, so it was a little blend of both. So I did want to point that out, as I'm sure you might have noticed that and wondered. One of the additional pieces that we're doing this year, so when, on, what I'll mention in a second, is Friday is a half day in service, and so when I send out the survey for that PD, I'm also gonna be sharing a folder of all of the presentations from the full day in service. So the presenters very graciously provided their materials, their resources, so I've put those all into a folder, that I'll be able to share district-wide for people to access. So anything that they didn't get to participate in and are really interested in, it just gives them that opportunity. They don't get the, you know, the benefit of the actual presentation, but it just really seemed like that was a desire for people to take so many different, and they were limited. So I'm excited to be able to offer that to people this year. And then, as I foreshadowed, my last item is a reminder that we have a half day for students on November 7th, which is Friday. So a reminder to families, half day on Friday, and while students leave, staff will be staying and participating in professional learning opportunities across the district. Our pre-K-5 staff will continue their professional development on supporting multilingual learners through effective Tier One instruction. BHS staff will be working within departments to continue the work from the September in-service that we had with our consultants from Athena K-12, engaging by design, which is designing learning opportunities for students that provide voice and choice, and promote student engagement and ownership of learning. And then the remainder, they have a portion of the afternoon working on that, and the remainder of the afternoon will be focused on other department work. BIS staff, as part of their Title I funding, will be working with Keys to Literacy on key comprehension routines, and they're looking to create strong cross-curricular alignment through literacy and comprehension strategies at the middle level, which is supporting the literacy efforts at BIS. Elementary paraprofessional staff will be participating in a session on supporting students with Autism Spectrum Disorder. Our administrative assistants will be working with the Technology Department for some professional learning on a variety of technology platforms, including Google Calendar, Google Sheets, Canvas, some more, so that was based on some requests from that group. And then we have other PD on Friday that includes implementation support for the secondary mathematics teachers. So we, that new adoption, we're in year one of our implementations, so they have PD related to that. There is also co-teaching PD, which is a continuation from September and October, that is for BHS staff who are co-teaching this year. And then student support personnel will be working with Michael Joyce on 504 plans. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions, comments, Jen? Peter?
Yeah, it's nice, Kristin, to get such positive feedback from a PD session. In my long and somewhat illustrious career, I've spent some, some painful PD sessions, and it's so great to see this. And I think it's so important as well. And I love that feedback. Thank you.
Andre?
For me, thank you, Kristin. Just a question about the math programs that you were using. You noted you had three programs. iReady was amongst them. I'm familiar with iReady. That's a platform that's used in my district of New Bedford. And so how is that process for narrowing, narrowing from the three to the two to a final selection in terms of those platforms? I'm familiar with iReady. I wasn't familiar with the other two that you were, that were in the running.
So the Curriculum Council did a deep dive into six programs, and that's how we got to those three. So the information that they put together to share with the group is, has now been shared with K-5 staff, that they'll review. And so the narrowing is actually gonna be coming from the staff through their, a Google form, where they will, based on their review of the materials that we have available, and those reports, I'll say reports, that were put together by the Curriculum Council, and that's how we'll identify the two.
That's great. Again, because they're in the classroom, you know, they're gonna want to be the ones implementing it. You noted iReady, that came to my mind, you know, use it, familiar with it, you know, found it to be, I found it to be effective. But certainly, you know, those individuals that are, you know, they should have significant input, you know, in terms of the platform that's utilized, and, you know, the, it's, I found, again, for me, it to be helpful. Relative to professional development, I concur. It's great to see the tremendous feedback. You know, I participate in these PD days, and again, you have the choice, go here, go there. Sometimes staff members will go together, you'll see staff members from other schools, so on and forth. So it just makes it a collaborative and encouraging, encouraging experience, I think, where you really are able, you know, just to kind of put win, some, some win back in your sails. You know, again, to Peter's point, sometimes you're just, you know, how does this relate to anything that, that's relevant? But you said that 13 of the 13 people agreed to come back?
There's still more to hear from, but so far, we're 100%.
So they enjoy being here, the staff members enjoy what they're, what they're doing. And, you know, those, those are days on, they're not, they're not days off. And I just, as an educator, you know, it can be invaluable, those conversations with other teachers, where you discuss what's going on, and you might get a strategy. You know, you might have a similar issue with something that has become intransient, you know, and you're just at your wit's end, and you have those, okay, so now I see it from a different light. I feel better about the situation. I have some additional tools in my tool belt to be able to apply. And then you go back into the classroom, and you can have, you know, fresh lens, and then those things you apply are effective, and we have a complete reset. Right? Versus, again, these, as we're in the midst of the school year right now, so, you know, we're getting quite familiar with each other, and sometimes, you know, there can be hard feelings, but that's just, that's just what educators are well aware of. So just great feedback from PD. And I'll just conclude, you didn't note it, but just being out on the campaign trail and talking to people, exit interviews came up, and I was glad to tell community members that that's something that we're doing, that's something that we're implementing more and more, and to try to have that as a feature. But I heard it from a couple different community members and staff members that said, you know, I was, but I was glad to say that we had, and so that's, again, a very helpful resource for us to have in the district. So people that, people in the community are aware that we are sensitive to what our staff members are experiencing, and we want them to turn around and to stay in Barnstable Public Schools. So I just wanted to note that it came up, and I was glad at the work that is being done.
Thank you.
Mike?
Excellent presentation. I have nothing, nothing further. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Kristin.
Thanks.
Appreciate it. All right, old business. Item 4.1, Create Policy IKFE Competency Determination. This is the second read, and it's on for action. At the October 17th meeting, we just added one item that referenced the fact that any of the students who met the MCAS competency determination standard in the three areas, English Language Arts, Math, and Science, and/or Science prior to the January 3rd, 2025, will retain that benefit as a demonstration of competency.
Move to Create Policy IKFE Competency Determination as presented in tonight's material.
I'll second.
Have an emotion made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item 4.2, Revise Policy IKF. This is the second read. There were no changes between the meetings, and no feedback. Did anybody get feedback after October 17?
Nope.
Sarah? Okay.
Move to revise Policy IKF Graduation Requirements as presented in tonight's materials.
Second.
Have an emotion made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item, new business. Item 5.1, 2025-26 School Improvement Plans for the Ena Cobb Early Learning Center, the Barnstable Community Innovation School, BWB, Centerville, High West, and West Villages. So thank you to all the principals, long day. Who's on the docket to be first?
[laughing]
All right, you're up.
I need some encouraging nods, just so. All right. It's on? Okay. And then I just clicked the, this? Oh, look at that. Okay. It's really interesting, because a year ago, I was in such a different place, you know, and with the school improvement plan, I hadn't been at the school. I really didn't know, you know, I was just kind of what going, was happening from the year before, and some other suggestions. So it's, it's so different, because I feel like I've learned so much. I'm almost a little more nervous coming up here this year, because I know more, and now I know what I need to know. And last year, I was like, ah, I don't know. And it was okay. But yeah, so I've, you know, I've had a chance to actually really think about things, and, you know, things that will benefit us, and what, and what we, you know, what we need to work on, and our strengths. So with the culture of belonging, we, you know, a really important thing to us is parent, parent events, and trying to get them in. We actually, we had, we've had great attendance. We had our spring, like, family picnic, you know, it was huge. It was awesome. Like, there were so many people, it was so much fun. And then we had our curriculum night a few weeks ago, and the goal with our curriculum night is to have parents come into the classrooms and play with their children, and learn with their children. You know, in the past, you know, a lot of times they'll come in, and they'll just kind of stand back, and let, you know, the teachers instruct. But it was so great this year. Every classroom I went into, the parents were all engaged with their kiddos. It was wonderful. And something we're also doing to support that, was the school, Amber Camilio, the school psychologist, and I were talking about more ways that we can get them involved. And I had also been talking about, there's a Cape Cod Toy Library, which I think is amazing, and we started to talk about having our own toy library, where parents can take out, you know, we'll basically do bins, and have information in each one, you know, how you're playing, like, you know, this, and this is what, you know, this is how we're helping your child grow. So they know, and they can, you know, be playing with them. So we're excited about that. That's one of the things we're doing. You know, shared understanding among educators and families of developmental milestones. So, you know, for their lifelong learning, all of our kiddos are very different. So, you know, they're hitting milestones at different times, and we, you know, we want parents to be aware, and the staff, you know, so it's not like you're just, you know, teaching, like, okay, they're three. So they're all gonna hit these milestones, that, you know, being able to like, reach them where they, they're at, and have a better, better understanding, and where the parents have an understanding. Because, you know, if you think about it, a lot of these parents, this is the first time their child's been in school. You know, some, it's not their first rodeo, and they've had a few go through, but for new parents, you know, they, you know, they might not have a lot of information. This year, we are participating in the district-led PD for the multilanguage learners, so are excited about that, because in the past, you know, our school is different, so it doesn't always streamline with what the elementary schools are doing. So I think we miss out on collaboration and getting TCT. So I think we miss out on collaboration and getting TCT teachers, you know, from the district. So we're doing that this year, which I think is great. And we have walkthroughs this week. On Friday, we have ours. And I'm really curious for the feedback, because the way our classrooms are set up, it's a lot of what we're already doing. Everything is very visual and tactile. And that's a lot of what they're, we're learning in the PD. So I'm, I'm actually really excited to hear what they say about, like, what we're doing and how we can improve it. But I just think it'll be interesting, because it's, you know, it's a different, it's a different look. And, yeah, developmentally appropriate practices and lessons. I will say that a lot of our students are coming in with higher needs, and it, it calls for more differentiation in the classroom. So I think that's something, you know, that we are taking a closer look at. You know, all of our teachers are special education teachers, so this gives them a chance to really show what they know, because there are kiddos on many different levels, and kiddos with more needs. So there's some things that do need to be altered, and we need to really look at that and see where they are developmentally. And I added our picture of Zion there last year, from doing his Pledge of Allegiance, which was one of the cutest thing ever. I could literally fill up a whole slideshow of just pictures. I changed these a million times. I was like, oh, wait, I'm going to use that one, I'm going to use that one. But, um, okay. So, uh, something exciting. On this page, we have come up with a little mascot, and his name is Hatch Maverick Cobb. We call him Hatch. Our AA, Betsy, is a huge Top Gun fan, so she wanted to get Maverick in there. So, but he's Matt, he's Hatch the Little Hawk. Because we wanted to, you know, connect ourselves, you know, with the rest of the district and with the high school. I just thought, we thought that would be fun. And he's super cute. Basically, he was created with AI, which I thought was really interesting as well, because we talked about doing it, and I was just up one night. And so I started, and I put in an actual picture of a baby hawk, and it just kept going from there and there and there, which was a lot of fun. And so we came out with Hatch. And it's fun, because I can change him, like, I have him jumping in the leaves, like, endless opportunities with Hatch. So we're hoping, and actually, a gentleman from the high school history teacher, I believe, I can't remember his name right now. I had sent, Sarah had suggested that I send this to him, because I wanted some kind of poster or something. And he's like, yeah, what do you need? Literally an hour later, he's ringing our doorbell with the poster. I was like, this is amazing. So now I just need to get it hung up. But that's okay. So with data, which is, it's so important. It's important for everybody, but like, especially with, with our little guys. You know, this is their first, their first time in school. We're seeing where they're at, what they can achieve. We, the, our BCBA works with us. We want to, we've, we've talked about this last year, too, just kind of having a streamlined data that we can, so when we're going to the elementary schools, we're looking at the same format. It's easy. We can all read it, which is like the most important thing. Like, someone come in, and like, you can read it and understand it. So we're working on that. As always, you know, we're analyzing and identifying student growth, strengths, and needs by reviewing their data. We have TS Gold assessments, and then individual classroom data for, to monitor progress, and instructional decisions, again, to see where they're at and who, you know, who might need a little more or something, you know, what they could access, so. And this is something I have been thinking about a lot, and again, with our, our, you know, growing clientele, like, we started this year with 153 students. That's the highest we've ever started with. I think last year was around 120 something. We're up to 173 now. You know, and last year, we had at least 40 come in from early intervention and other, other referrals. So it's definitely growing, and, you know, I wanted, so using our data to review and improve our half-day integrated preschool model, exploring a full-day option to meet family and student needs, strengthen kindergarten readiness, and increase peer model enrollment. Our peer model enrollment could be a lot better. And a lot of our peer models right now, they end up, you know, we do evaluate, and they may not end up needing services. With a full day, I think we would have an influx, you know, of peers. Also regarding our pre-K's kindergarten readiness, I, I think there's a big gap from when, you know, they're with us for two and a half hours. They, you know, there's really no big transition, transition. You're not going to a cafeteria. You're not going to specials. And, you know, they're pretty small classrooms, and they have a lot of support. So then going to kindergarten, that really all changes. And I think that it would just be, it would be very helpful if they had those skills, you know, going in to kindergarten, where, you know, they already kind of have that stamina. Of course, like, the three-year-olds would still be half-day. And this is a very wide and huge thing, but it's just something I've, I've really been thinking of. So I wanted to put that on there. So, that's it. Anyone have any?
Thank you.
Well, I love the AI logo, first of all. I think it's, it's great. I mean, you know, sometimes it's hard to leave the house when you get hooked up with AI, right?
Yeah.
So entertaining. You can do all sorts of things. But I also think it's, it's really prescient to, like, think about the kids entering kindergarten. I mean, now that my son is 18, it seems like so long ago. But I remember formatively figuring out the relationship between my son and his teacher and myself. I mean, it's a lot for even for a mom. It's got to be, like, completely overwhelming for a kid to figure out how all that works. I would, I, I think full day is essential in readiness for kindergarten.
Yeah.
We, we had full-day daycare for my son, and I think it helped a lot socially. So, yeah. And I remember when we did the tour of the schools, I think it was Kathy and Sarah and I that went to Ena Cobb, and it was just so adorable, like,
So adorable.
We were all falling all over ourselves of how cute it was. And then I think there was a, wasn't there a service dog there, too? And we lost it on the service dog.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's really, it's, they're so easy to love at that age.
Yeah, it makes it a very happy place to work.
Yeah, it's great. Thank you.
Peter?
Yeah, I'm good. Thank you for the report.
Andre?
Yeah, very good report. Just had a couple of questions. In terms of the school objectives, data-driven decision-making, analyzing, identifying student growths and needs using regular reviewing data tools to monitor progress, how often is that taking place? I just ask, you know, just in terms of their, their retention, you know, and just developing those fundamental skills and literacy. We know how important, how important early literacy is in a student's kind of trajectory. So how is that?
Yeah, so with the TS Gold, that is data that's being taken consistently, and it's, it's based on our report cards, and your goals, the goals for the report cards. So that, basically, every day. And then they have, like, four checkpoints during the year, where they have to have all the information in. So there's four times we're looking and saying, like, okay, they've come here, you know, they haven't grown so much. So they have that continuously to look at, which is, which is great. And just with our individualized data, you know, especially our kiddos on IEPs, they, all of their goals, they have, all the teachers have, we have data forms set up for them. So they know with everything they're doing that they're collecting data, so we can, we can show the growth, or, you know, where they might need more support.
That's good, great. You know, again, they're starting out, but those core skills, you know, and having them, you don't really understand, you don't think about it. I, I work in an elementary school, so, now. But I've worked at every single level. But specifically, being in that setting and really recognizing, you know, that a strong foundation is established, that they, that it's invaluable, so we don't want to see those gaps in learning. I was glad to hear about a cookout event?
Yeah, the picnic. And they've done it every year, but this was, you know, everyone told me, like, oh, we've never had this many people here. And it was so fun. And every, you know, everyone was playing, all the teachers were all, the kids were all, it was, it was fun. And I was so nervous about it. I felt like, you know, I was having, you know, hosting an event, and I was the hostess. And I'm like, oh, my God, like, I don't have a tablecloth, or I don't, and all the teachers, like, no, you don't need to worry about it. And the staff there is amazing, because they do, they have everything like that. They're like, this is what we do. They have it all planned. It's amazing. And they know, like, what the kids want and the families want. But it was great. Yeah.
Excellent. And then just to conclude, I'm, I like this AI-generated, his name is Hatch?
Hatch.
His name is Hatch, and he's, he's happy. That's, that's, that's wonderful. And he's enthusiastic. Something that's important for me, again, if we're pushing down to the elementary level, this district culture. I'm just kind of interested, are the students learning about the history of BCIS, which was formerly Hyannis East? And how are they learning, just again, the history of the school, the town, our traditions? For me, you know, I think about something that probably good for our young people to know. Again, depending on, because everybody's not from the district, I, you know, I, I understand that. But right next to your school used to be?
I'm just going to interrupt. I'm at Ena Cobb, not BCIS.
Oh, okay, okay.
I did go to Hyannis East, though, a million years ago.
I'm off here. I'm getting, I'm getting ahead of, I'm ahead of myself. I thought BCIS, so I will hold off on that.
Hold that question.
I will hold that question for somebody else. Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Mike?
Yep. I like the, the toy chest, the toy library.
Yeah, the toy library.
That's a really cool idea. What, like, the directions in it, and like, how to use it, and like, just so it's used right, and like, the developmental, I'm sure being the preschool, it's about developing skills. Because, I mean, there are little peanuts there, three or four years old, so they're not going to be learning, like, ABCs or anything like that. They're, they're doing developmental skills at three, three to four. As a dad, I had four, all four of my kids went through the preschool. Actually, all, all four of them were peers. So like, I remember back to those, Jen, you were talking about it. I remember back to those days. But, uh, yeah, I like that. It's kind of cool. Like, especially, I have four. So like, by number four, I didn't necessarily need the directions, but number one,
Number one.
You think they're gonna, you're gonna break them constantly. So like, yeah, I mean, that's, as the, when you're having your first child, you know, you're trying to figure everything out, and, but, uh, yeah, I like that idea. I really do. Like, it helps them. Now, are those the same toys and stuff that they're using in the cla, like, in the classrooms?
It would be based on that, and, you know, we'd go through the different skills, you know, and also like,
That's just cool. So like, the kids aren't just getting it in, like, learning the skills in school. Mom and dad can take it home and continue the learning process and using it the right way, so they are kind of like, you get the line going through.
Yeah, so they can really engage with them. You know, and a lot of our kiddos, I, you know, they're on screens a lot.
Yep.
So this also, you know, helps with the parent engagement.
Yeah, that's awesome. I really, that's an awesome idea. I really like that. On that, great job. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for the presentation. I am a bit concerned about, I think there's a great need for the full day, because I know we do lose our peers, and we also lose some of the students that need to be there because they're coming from early intervention.
Yeah.
Yet when they're with the working parents, not all have the luxury of being able to drop them off and then pick them up and get them where they need to go again.
Right, yeah.
And it should be noted that that private preschool, they don't cut them a tuition break either. They're still paying, even though they can't go. My, my question is, I know that that CPPI grant is also working collaboratively with you.
Yeah, working.
And I did have a, a brief conversation, and from what I understand, part, they're supporting community-wide preschools. It's not just Barnstable, but some of their offerings are full-day, and that something might be able to be worked out there.
Yeah, they, they will fund a full-day classroom. They will not fund something that, like ours, that's, we even asked, you know, if, like, oh, they're with us for this amount of time, and then they go to West Parish, does that count? West Parish has opened a classroom through CPPI. And Sandwich has been very successful with CPPI. And they have a few classrooms that are full-day.
Yeah. Do you still have the Wednesday for, for Teacher Day, and it's Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday? Or has that model changed? I didn't?
It's, it's the same. So we have half a day on Wednesday for students. It's kiddos in the afternoon, so we don't have our littles on Wednesdays. And now that time is actually for case management for the teachers, so for prep and case management.
How, how do you envision the full day, or is that just a brainstorm in its infancy?
It's a brainstorm in its infancy. There's all different ways. But yeah, I just wanted to.
Sure you need more space?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, that's right there.
Right.
But just something I think I've worked.
Thank you so much. I do appreciate it.
All right.
Thank you. All right, who's next?
Mr. King, I'm ready for that question. I can answer that for you. All right. Which way do I press it?
In the middle.
Yeah, for the clicker. There we go. I did it. Okay, I'm good. I'm going to echo the sentiments of Sasha in saying that I am coming up here not a deer in headlights this time. And this is actually pretty exciting for me, because creating this school improvement goal was not just my effort. So I sat with school council, with staff. We kind of wedded the district improvement goals, our innovation measurable goals, last year's school improvement, and then built this one. So that was pretty exciting for me, and it was really good. The first one is the culture of belonging, and a lot of it is a continuation of what we're doing. We communicate with the BCIS stakeholders through our staff communication, the family smore letter. And I think my biggest takeaway from last year, the PD I did over the summer in looking at the innovation goals, is that to create a safe and inclusive environment, community and family engagement has to require two-way communication. We may be great at disseminating information, but we need their input. So that's our big focus this year. So embedded in the smore are survey data, polls, and from that, and in channeling our youth truth survey data and listening to school council, listening to PTO, listening to parental input, we've created some pretty exciting things. One of the first things we did was we revamped our curriculum night. So it was no longer a situation where the parents sat and listened to what we did. We made it an interactive open house. So the children came in, they had a scavenger hunt, and it was translated in all of our languages. So all of the directions were, we didn't have to do anything. And the child and family entered the building and went through every single place that the child goes. Nurses, cafeteria, enrichments, classrooms, my office, for instance, for my office. And everybody had a duty. We gave them information, and then the family had to partake. So for instance, to me, the family newsletter, the smore is super important, because that's where I give the information, that's where I gain information. So their requirement, the students absolutely loved this, was the parent had to show me on their phone that they get it, and that they could open it. And every time they did something, they got a bead. The student got the bead. And so when they went around, by the time they traveled throughout the whole school, they had a complete bracelet with beads representing everywhere they went. And it was phenomenal. We had a 60% participation rate, which is unheard of for us. It was great. It was, we were packed. But it's those kind of things that we're looking on creating community partnerships, where we get that information. That being said, some of the other things we're doing, I'm very excited. Next Wednesday night, you're all invited to attend, we are having our first Family Safety Night. Because one of the biggest concerns from our families was safety. So I met with our SRO officer, Natalie Ficato, and we created a poll that we put out to families on the topics that they considered important. One of the biggest ones was internet safety and the use of devices. You would think at K3, that's not a big issue. It really is a big issue. So next Wednesday night, we have myself, our tech teacher, Natalie Ficato, our SRO officer, and Katie from the DA's office, and we're going to present a panel, where we're going to give parents resources, information, Q and A. And basically, it's the first time we're doing this, so I don't know what the turnout's going to be. But it's a way for us to get the message across that we do this together. together. So, and then midway through when we were planning this, understanding this is an adult conversation, we thought, we have so many families that don't have childcare. So our title team stepped up to the plate. And we're gonna be up in the gym and they're gonna be down below in the cafeteria running math and literacy games with the students. And we're gonna provide dinner. So I'm pretty excited to see how that comes out.
Time was?
Five thirty to six thirty, November 12th. Let's see. The last on my list of that one is we're really focused on collaborative leadership and we re-instituted, which is one of our innovation goals, the use of our cadres. We went through a series over the spring to develop the five cadres. It was quite an extensive process. We ended up with PBL, SEL, curriculum, family and community engagement, and ML equity and instruction and support. We've had two meetings thus far. They've all created SMART goals and are now sending out survey data to both families and staff. The next goal is the rigorous curriculum. And this, to me, is another really exciting thing. Because when I was up talking to you last year about how we bridge the partnership because our school is a little different and we don't have the same curriculum, best practice is best practice. And our goals really aligned with what the district was offering. So we are partaking hand in hand with all of the ML instruction, professional development through TNTP. We're doing the co-teaching that Karina De Silva's offering for all, all of our educators are doing it. So that we're, we're working now hand in hand with the rest of the district and all of our PD. We attended the October 10th PD and my staff loved it. And it's just created a deeper, richer partnership. Because we're all in this together. And we're all transitioning to BUE. So that was really exciting. We're also doing, we're also, yeah, listen, we're also doing continued learning walks. And our learning walks mirror the exact learning walks that the rest of the district does. We use the same tools. We get the same feedback. So it creates that cohesiveness. Because once again, best practice is best practice, even if our curriculum's not the exact same. Finally, let me see, I think, oh, we're gonna continue doing MTSS data dives. We have a pretty good structure for our MTSS framework. I think the final missing piece is when you have all of this data and you have these tiered supports, it's very laborious for the people that do the data to maintain it. And what we're looking into, and I know the district is as well, is adopting a digital framework that kind of takes the front load off all of that organization. It helps communication between the teachers more readily available. And it also gives a stronger support for that tiered interventions. When you have those small structured, it records the data, it makes it readily available to all the stakeholders on the team. And it really, it's a lot of the executive functioning data frontal load that so much of my staff do, that takes away from that actual student-teacher interaction. So we're looking at that. And the last one is, again, we're transitioning. The most important thing when you have a child going through a system and when you're dealing with a family-home partnership is that common language. We're looking at all of the ways we provide SEL support. And it seamlessly goes with the rest of my colleagues back here and into BUE. So we're all using the zones of regulation. So by the, by the time our kindergartners get to fourth grade, they're well-versed in the same common language and the same approaches. This summer, we worked and we revamped, we have an SEL Support and Intervention Guide. And it's a book, because faculty leaves and new faculty comes in, and because there's so many things that we do do, CPS, Responsive Classroom, PBIS, Second Step, this is a cohesive, coherent guide that explains all of the whys of why we do this and the integral steps in how to do it. So that way, because you have new faculty and you can do mentorship, but there's so much information. So that's our, on our dashboard. So teachers can look and refer to it if they have a question, if they haven't done something in a while, or new teachers come. We're doing Tier One rollout of the Zones of Regulation. That's my little friend Maria Clara down there showing us, we all have Zones of Regulation, I don't know what you call them, boards, where those are the four zones and students can place where they are throughout the day. What else do we have? We have a continuum of our PBIS owlish ways. That's the little owls on the tree down there. Students, much like SOAR tickets, earn owls. And then if they get five owls in one month, they get a book. We have a cadre completely devoted to SEL behavior. One of their ideas is the creation of a discipline matrix. So it helps calibrate and get everybody on the same page as to what a logical consequence is. And then the last is looking at, even though we're doing school improvement plans year to year, we really want to step back and create a strategic plan for SEL PD, which is a longer three to five-year plan that it builds upon. And we're gonna use it through survey data, DESA data, and cadre input. And that's it. And, oh, Mr. King, it is the 75th birthday of the BCIS building. We are well aware. And teachers love to share the history. So our newly-inducted third-grade ambassadors are creating a skit that will be happening probably in January. You're welcome to attend to our monthly all-school community meeting where they will give a rendition of the history of the building and the school.
Well, I will, I will be there. Thank you for speaking to that and answering my question fully and concisely. I will be there.
I will send you a personal invitation.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you, Jen.
Yeah. So a couple of things. I, I love the idea of the partnership and communication between families and schools, not just schools and families, right? Like, that is absolutely essential. And I think something that I know for my particular experience up through eighth grade did not exist. It was always coming from the school. To me, no input necessarily unless there was bad feedback, which there was sometimes, you know. And it was very uncomfortable for me because, you know, your kid is your everything and you, you know, you want to be able to comment, help, whatever. So I really appreciate that. And I think that that, if that can be held up through, you know, through elementary school, through the intermediate school, and into eighth grade, where I know there are, there is the counseling team that's super supportive and, and does actually ask for feedback and there's two-way communication, then, then that's a huge win, you know. And I think that might also answer some of the reasons why people leave in sixth grade, right? Like if we can, if we can really keep the two-way communication going. I remember, you know, when my son was at BIS, they were preparing him for eighth grade in the high school by allowing him to fail a certain subject. You can imagine that phone call. You know, so I mean, that's just, that just was not preparing anyone with no communication with, to me at all. It was just horrendous, horrendous.
So what I found, coming from a behavioral background, is that very often, the kids that struggle the most have parents that have grown up hating school. They've had really bad experiences. And when you can build that trusting relationship and remove that barrier, mountains are moved.
Yeah. I think what I needed was a phone call saying my son was struggling.
Yeah.
That's all I needed. But, you know, so I think that this, if, if this could become, you know, kind of the default, where there is two-way communication, where parents feel free to reach out and teachers feel free to reach out, I think it just, just creates a bigger breadth of a relationship that then equals positive results, right?
Right.
So I love that. And you're doing a great job. And I appreciate that you're kind of triangulating everything that was and everything that was needed with your new charter and, and everything that we need in the future. And you're putting it all together. It's a bunch of big puzzle pieces. And, you know, the best legislation comes from, you know, asking many groups what they think. So, you know, kind of holding court. So one of, my neighbor is involved with your school, her two sons, one went there, one is still there. And she's very involved. Emily, and I trust her counsel. And she's very wise. She says great things about how, how you incorporate different points of view. And I think it's amazing. So, good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, great job. I love the idea of that safety night. It makes a lot of sense. You kind of went a little too quick for me on zones.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. I'm, I'm old. Zones of Regulation. Can you, very briefly?
Okay. So the key to all your social skills as you grow is your ability to self-regulate. So what the Zones of Regulation does is it gives a language and it's nonjudgmental, so all feelings are okay. And it helps students identify where they are in their self-regulation. So for instance, if you're blue, you're sad, or you're tired, or you don't feel good, and it's harder to function. If you're in the green zone, you're in that kind of nice learning zone where you're awake, you're alert, you're happy, you're ready to go. And it's the easiest to focus.
And they have to identify themselves a couple of times a day. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah. And they're really good at it. They're really good at it. And then yellow is a little wiggly. You can be excited, you can be irritated. And then red is when you're angry and explosive.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I would say yellow. Thank you. That was a clear explanation. Appreciate it.
First of all, thank you for clarifying to my error, confusing.
Oh, that's okay.
Enoch Cobb, BCIS.
A lot of schools.
My error. But that's, I'm thrilled about the 75th anniversary. Again, going back to the 1950s as a history person. So there's gonna be a lot of great things for the students to learn and understand. What I was thinking about, the Kennedy rink used to be right there, which was outside in its early rendition. Then the roof was put on and then sort of, of course, we now have HYCC. But just things like that, that people might not necessarily be aware, but I just think are helpful in terms of understanding the history of the town. So thank you for, you know, a couple of things, school safety and the recognition that our, our young people are literally growing up first grades with these phones and devices. First grade. And just, I can only-
Kindergarten.
Right? So that's, I'm glad to hear that. It's, you don't, again, think of that. I just note, I'm an analog person. Landline telephone call, you know, and in this information age and then going on in the art, it's just fundamentally changing every single facet, all the way down to the kindergarten, elementary level. So I was really glad to hear that. So that information's getting out there and people are just aware, right? I'm, you know, I grew up with Nintendo Duck Hunt, Genesis, you know. I did not have these super-powered devices that I could, it's, it's just a world of difference. And my colleagues have spoken just about cell phones. And I'm gonna continue to, you know, it's fundamentally changing things. And we can't just say, we can't just let it get out of control. So I'm glad to hear that. The Zones and that language, that's, I'm thrilled with how you explained it. Because I'm at the elementary level in a K to five building, even though I work with three to five, I was just, some of my fifth graders today were acting, the kindergartners were putting them to shame with their conduct. And, you know, they, just a language to understand, for them to express, you know, that I'm, so that rather than it just being a tug of war from the beginning, as, you know, once they're, they're hyperactive and they, they don't have the language or the understanding. So that's, I'm glad that you're utilizing it and it's showing results, you know, in terms of the social-emotional learning, you know, that's a lot of times what you're instructing. Sometimes you don't get to the curriculum in certain groups because you're just trying to get them to respect basic norms that you can get there. So you started off wonderfully correcting me as I needed to be corrected. I'm thrilled to hear about the 75th anniversary. And the Zones of Regulation is outstanding. Thank you.
Mike?
So thank you. Once again, because I, just for the public, they, they, when you're, what was it, last year, re-upping your chat, your-
Renewing the innovation.
Yeah, renewing it. I had major, not major, I had concerns about the fact that when kids go to four, I'm not an educator. I was a firefighter. But I'm a dad of four. So I kind of get the, I kind of always had that concern about like when we have five schools go into one, if four are doing kind of one thing and one's not, I get concerned for the kids coming in from that school, are they gonna be kind of like left out in the cold because they're the oddball out? Majority wins, democracy, right? So I thank you for addressing my concerns and like literally most, not most, but some of that stuff was literally based on my concerns last year. And I'm ecstatic that you're, you guys are addressing it. And other than that, like you're doing a great job. Give up the good work. I don't really have a lot of questions. It was just, I want to just give you a public kudos for, like I said, taking the concerns and bringing them back to you folks and you people away smarter. So if you were like, no, Mike, it's not a concern. And like, as I said, you have that open dialogue. You know what? I have no problems with you saying, no, Mike, we kind of looked into it and like, but you, you looked into it and you're changing your practices. And I, I appreciate that because they're all our kids. So like, but thank you. Thank you. And have a good night.
Thanks.
Everybody said what needed to be said. So thank you. The presentation was very clear and informative. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
All right. Thanks, everyone, for having us all here tonight so we can talk about all the great things upcoming for BWB. BWB is a very strong community. Despite Zillow's expert educational opinion of my school, it is strong. And I will talk a little bit about what we're doing upcoming this year. A lot of it is built on our foundation that we already started last year. So I'm just gonna go over a couple of the things that are new and a couple of things that were ongoing in each of the categories. I'll make it short and sweet. For our culture of belonging, we are going to be continuing with our interest pathways. Oh, the picture didn't get in here. I have a lovely picture of Mr. Good doing his pickleball. And you must have already uploaded it before.
You gotta get him young. That's what I say.
But he is, he led our pickleball group this year along with Mrs. Morgan, our AA. And it was fabulous. This year, we had a ton of community people and parents and teachers all doing incredible things. You can see, we have a building company here that's, one of the pictures there. And they built birdhouses straight from the beginning to the end with blueprints that they created. They had people come and speak. It was incredible. And so through the weeks, they created their birdhouses. And then they're going to have those. Now they just finished up. But lots and lots of support. Each time we do it, we're getting a little bit more people involved. So it's, maybe they were nervous at first, but now we're getting a lot of community people. And so we welcome anybody else that wants to come and lead a pathway when we do it again in the spring. And we are going to integrate the standard response protocol. That's a little bit new this year with all the language that the whole town and the whole country really is using. So those will be some things that we are going to, so that we all have a common language throughout, throughout Barnstable. For rigorous curriculum, you heard a lot already. We have our reading program, CKLA, that the teachers really just took a big bite out of last year and spent the year working on that. And they're gonna continue this year. They're feeling more comfortable with the program, which is great. I'm seeing incredible things happening already. We saw great growth this year too in our beginning scores, which is awesome. So that's off to a great start. We're still working on our CFL and looking forward to piloting a new math program. But that's a lot. And we have our ML work going on too. So for teachers who are already working incredibly hard, there's a lot that they're taking on and learning and trying new things. So one of the things that we have done this year is create sort of mini instructional leadership teams. And they're working on those once a month for their PLC time. Those are multi-grade. So one kindergarten teacher, one first grade, one second, one third, and then special education teachers, EL teachers. And each took a particular subject. So one is math, one is ELA, and one is social-emotional learning. And they are really focusing on looking at the data for that particular area so that they can help make decisions, talk about best practices. And then they're actually gonna be doing some peer visits to each other's classrooms and gaining some new ideas and also offering some feedback based on what they discover in their data dive. So that's new this year. And for our third, we're really digging into Responsive Classroom, which is a social-emotional way of life, I'll call it, because we've been working on it almost as long as I've been here, which is a long time. And it's tried and true. We love the practices, but we have a lot of teachers that have not been trained and then a bunch of teachers that have. So we're sort of using our teachers that have been trained to- that have, so we're sort of using our teachers that have been trained to, as leaders for the others, and we're creating a structure for all of our staff meetings and through our newsletters for parents and for teachers, that really follows that method, gives tips. Each of the teachers signed up for a staff meeting that they run and do it in the same method they would in a classroom. So a lot of the information going out this year, you can see on one of the pictures there, even one of our parents, one of our rooms at Open House, they had their parents do their hopes and dreams to, kids do their hopes and dreams, teachers, staff, so you can see that reflected there. And one new thing we're doing also for this same area is some whole school assemblies, so a lot of my colleagues gave me some ideas this year, and we decided we were going to go forward with whole school assemblies, it's been incredible. We've had one, we have another one on Friday, we're doing it on the half days, and recognizing kids for all kinds of great things, using our students to model expectations and appropriate behavior for others, each of the things that we're highlighting each month, and so they'll do a little skit on Friday that will highlight growth mindset, is what they're going to show. So some of our ambassadors are working on that right now and getting ready to do that, and then we highlight other things that are going on, we, our specialists will add things to the slide deck and come up, we had some songs last time, we have some STEM activities coming this time, and then I usually offer a challenge, so the challenge I gave last was to bring in the biggest leaf, and you can, you can see this one will be hard to argue with, but it's, it is, it is, it's really cool. It's a rhubarb, mhm, and they had to measure and know what it was and bring it in, but we had all kinds of kids bringing in leaves on the bus, and it was fun. And the coolest thing about it was that, I, we just announced it, we didn't actually put anything out to parents, so it was really on the kids if they wanted to be part of the challenge, and it was a lot of kids remembered to bring it in and participated and are excited to find out this week who had the biggest one, so a little sneak peek for anybody watching at home. Yeah, I think that's about it.
Questions? Jen?
I want to do a biggest leaf competition in my house and see what we can come up with. That's all, that's an awesome picture. You know, just thank you so much, I think it's, you guys are really innovative and trying to think of ways to fill holes and, you know, bridge gaps that might be at home, and it's appreciated, you know? Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Beth. I just can imagine all the kids with their leaves coming off the bus, and this young lady comes off with this, and it's like, oh, geez.
Exactly.
I guess we didn't win this one, yeah. I love that whole school assembly coming up this Friday, sounds great, sounds, and I want to thank you sincerely for allowing me to come in on Fridays, the pathways, it was fabulous. I don't know the gentleman's name, he was building boats.
Incredible, another grandfather.
He said he was up till midnight, like three nights a week, planning this, and he says, is this what a teacher does? And I says, yeah, part of it is planning, that's for sure. I said, I don't recall staying up till midnight, but at some point I gave it up, but it was a lot of fun, and I just want to tell you a quick funny story. I think it was the first week, the kids were great, by the way, they were fabulous, the weather was great, Sue Morgan was great, who helped me, I couldn't have done it without her, and I'm teaching them the intricacies of pickleball and the important thing, and they have a police, actually a former student of mine, Owen Murray, and he had a drone.
Yes.
Yes. So I have all their undivided attention, talking about the kitchen and, you know, things about pickleball, and the drone comes flying, every single kid, for about 10 minutes, gone. I'm like, over here, over here. Ah. So, yeah. Yeah.
The police department and the fire department try to outdo each other each week?
Yes, they do.
So it gets bigger and bigger and bigger?
Yeah, you really got some great things, I was so impressed, and you were so welcoming into the school and all that, so, and thank you for the presentation tonight.
Thank you.
Thanks. Andre?
Yeah, for me, it was a great presentation. First of all, I'm glad to hear names of former students that are doing big things in the community, Owen Murray, who's a member of our police department, is also a member of our Hall of Fame, he was a tremendous wrestler, champion, just tremendous, so involved in giving back within the, within the schools. Just the common areas to reflect rigorous curriculum principles, do clear expectations, positive signage, opportunities, interactions, that being implemented, you know, just places where students can maybe go, maybe take space, maybe get some movement, they certainly need movement at times, and just to kind of keep them on, on track, that's favorable, I'm in agreement with that. And then, love your, the idea of full school assemblies. So Friday, I'm sure it was a busy day in elementary schools, it was a busy day with me at Keith Middle School in New Bedford, students were all dressed up, you know, did an activity, they walked around the building, parents were there, took pictures, and then they had something in the auditorium, they just loved it, you know, so I'm glad that those type of things, you incorporate them in, you know, the students, not just in the information, they, sometimes they just need movement, they need to go from, you know, one place to the, you know, just get up, move their body, you know, and then do something else, come back, do something else, so I like that idea.
Thanks. Yeah, we, we all appreciate that this is the full moon and the daylight savings week that we get to come up and do this. We're all a little tired.
The perfect storm.
Mike?
Excellent job, good job. I like the fact that, like, like you said, it's kind of a two-year thing, it's kind of the continuation and kind of keep going forward, and I forgot to say to the other two principals, but this all wouldn't hap, and I know you guys are coming here, and I know it all represent, you're representing your staff, and you couldn't do this without the staff, so I just want to recognize, because I forgot, but it's for all the staff, that this is, you're just the ones who took the short straw and ended up having to come talk to us for two hours, but it, and I know you all agree, and you're all shaking your head there, but this wouldn't happen without the staff and their dedication and all these different committees and all of this different stuff that you're not paid for, and, I mean, we talk about us being volunteers and they're volunteers every day, every day, 365 days, so excellent job, just keep up the good work, and, but, once again, to all the staffs, not just yours, but everybody, it goes without saying that without them, this, we would fold. So it's, it's them and you guys and your leadership and now a kind of a big thing of doing it, but excellent job, good job, Beth.
Thanks. Yeah, and as Peter alluded to it earlier, like, they could not work any harder, so it's hard to hear the data sometimes, knowing how hard everybody's working, but every single one of them are coming to school, showing up every day. The kids have a lot of needs, so there's a lot of things going on, we're raising human beings, we're raising kids, and there's lots of parts to them, so there is that social emotional piece that we have to develop along with the academic, and we are doing the best we can to try to do all of that, so.
Thank you again. I think I'm going to make, let myself go first one of these times, because I feel as though I do nothing. The one thing I thought of though, when I saw that rhubarb leaf, not knowing what it was, was that will come in very handy when the weather gets warm and the HVAC goes down, poor Doug's in the back, but that's, that could be a solution, should it-
That's a giant fan, you mean?
Yeah. It's not work on you. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Make sure I turn it the right way. Oh, good. So kind of stole a little of my glory here, Mike, but I'm still going to share my thoughts.
I tend to always do that, I apologize.
It's all right. So as I enter my fourth year, I guess my senior as principal, I recognize I still have a lot to learn, but I am remaining excited about what lies ahead. I do want to extend my thanks for the guidance and support of this amazing administrative team behind me and in front of me, who have helped shape the leader I'm becoming, and I also want to thank the hard work of the entire Centerville community, that we're making meaningful progress toward our shared vision, which is represented in the school improvement plan I'd like to share before you. Again, I stand here alone at this podium, but I'm presenting to you what I hope and feel like is becoming more and more of a living document, which is only made possible by all the work of everyone at Centerville, so I can't thank them enough and all of you for your support, work, and dedication, and we always do have students at the center of what we do. This school improvement plan looks much like last year's, again, a continuation, it's not a one and done, it's, it's a process that we go through. The first district objective, the culture of belonging, inclusive climate and shared vision of student success, has a lot of repeats from last year, we have made some success with our chronic absenteeism, we have weekly attendance meetings as our core staff, and are reaching out and having really great conversations with families. We're now focusing on not only absences, but tardies and early dismissals as well, because those are time away from learning, so having some hard conversations that nine o'clock is nine o'clock, 9:04 is not nine o'clock, and just the impact it has when your child comes in one step behind classmates to start on their day. Our walking program is growing, it's exciting, our firefighters, it is so true, the little competition between fire and police, I try to leverage as much as I can, I'm not going to lie about that. One new initiative is an increase in family communication that's specific to the student learning progress, so we leveraged our youth truth survey data, and we had a lot of really rich and exciting discussions with staff at staff meetings, with actually school council members, and with our PTA, and we took a deep dive into feedback, so there was some language in the youth truth survey that discussed the student's academic progress or journey, and then parents not feeling they were getting consistent, regular feedback. So we talked about that word, and we worked on developing a building-wide professional practice goal that's directly related to that data. So teachers are using a consistent goal, but they're adjusting it to meet the needs of themselves, their families, and their students, and basically, how are we going to be helping give feedback to our families in a way that they're asking for? We're also worked, working on helping families understand what feedback is, they may be receiving feedback but not really recognizing it to be as such, so having those conversations, the back and forth, the two-way conversations that we've talked about, providing families with more of what they're looking for. And so it's related to specifically the grade level standards, how their child is performing in relation to others, where, where are they, are they on target, are they lagging, are they exceeding the expectations of where they should be? And then we are also, the other new initiative is the standard response protocols that you've heard mentioned previously, that we attended and are working on having that consistent language, having our school resource officers help support us, coming to PTA meetings and speaking with our families about some of those things. The second one that's objective about curriculum, again, what you've heard, what we've been doing, CKLA, the second year, again, our teachers at Centerville really have taken hold and are running with it, doing some exciting things, we're on board with the math curriculum, having staff members participate on the council, and wanting to pilot some of the programs when that's announced. And then we're going to revisit our Centerville Elementary School, the vision of a Centerville Elementary School student, kind of took a little bit of a backseat last year with the implementation, but really trying to look at that to align us with the high school one as well. Those bottom photos you see are all CKL-related, some of our student work, from second grade tall tales, from first grade fables and stories, and then our three second grade teachers had shirts made, a little bit of CKLA fun that they wore during that particular unit. So then moving on to the school-based objectives, we really, there's kind of a line of data across all that we're doing, and really working on an MTSS plan, I've been trying to get it going, and we now have some really great momentum and have made some progress, so we are continually refining the documents and the procedures and protocols that we're bringing into place to help support our students. The first is we rebranded what was previously called a child study team to a student support team, and that team is doing amazing things, we actually had a meeting today that it just was gripping to hear the people that attended sharing data they had collected that they were all very passionate about, passionate about that student was at the center of this meeting, and just, it was amazing as a leader to just kind of sit back and watch it play out. And as we're going through the process, we're continuing to make adjustments to not only the forms that are being presented and the data that's shared, but how we're responding, so to, to be continued, but very exciting the progress making there. We've rebranded, as some of my colleagues have, intervention is now called Win, What I Need Time. We're very fortunate to have our reading specialist who is very versed in the intervention strategies, and she's using her coaching part on Fridays to really help our classroom teachers develop their intervention plans that they're using with their students, creating how they're going to do collecting data, resources, she's working with our resource teacher who's taken some of our CKL resources and created an arg, which is a document that has resources available from K to third grade through CKLA to use during those intervention and planning time, so it's really starting to come along and exciting to see. We've also developed instructional leadership teams, and they're meeting during PLCs once a month, we have math literacy and MTSS as our focus, so again, we've got that kindergarten through third grade collaboration with specialists involved. And then the final building objective is building on our MLs, so about a quarter of Centerville's population continues to be multilingual learners, and so how can we best support those students and families? We had created kits last year to distribute to our new families, welcoming them, we're continuing to distribute those. We are trying to get some momentum, it feels like it's starting to go, we want to create an online resource library for our families. And then continuing with co-teaching, we have two teachers who are participating in the professional development and in the co-teaching model within our school, and then expanding on multicultural night, last year we had our first one, it was very successful, very exciting, a lot of participation from the community, and as Bonnie Stanley was implement, implemented that, she was really a strong person behind it, and she's a very reflective person, and before the night even ended, she was looking at ways to improve it for this coming year. So again, a lot of support from the community and within the staff, so we're excited about that. So thank you again for your time and support, Peter, thank you for your four years, we appreciate that. That's my presentation for you.
Jen? You don't want to go first?
Oh, I do.
You go.
So, one of the things that caught my eye is the creativity that exists around all the new things you can create with a paper plate, and I love the swan. It's like every, you think that you've done it all, and then you see something new, and I'm thinking about the CKLA, and so it's getting late, and I will admit I'm tired. It was implemented last year, first year.
So this is year two.
Right. So it's going to really take until those, last year, our current first graders, last year's kindergarten children, so we're not going to really see the impact until at the end of that third grade year. I mean, we can see strides, but it really takes starting, starting and the continuity of the four years that they're in one school with the same program to really assess and see the marked progress, not just the incremental. So I'm looking forward to, I'll still be here at year three, I'll probably be at the tail end, so I can't wait to see that data, because I think it's going to be extraordinary. I hear a little chit-chat around town, and it seems like families like that reading program, are you hearing, hearing that?
What we actually saw at a walk-through, Kristen's smiling because she was there, we were in a second grade classroom, and during one of the lessons, totally unprompted, a student made reference to the unit that was taught in first grade the year before.
That's awesome.
So the students are really holding on to it, and then I saw the next, like probably three days later, in one of our ILC classrooms, which is super exciting to me, again, a student made a connection with the content they were working on to what they had done on a field trip last year.
That's great.
So the kids are really making the connections and excited about the content.
Two, two different parents, and they were specifically from Centerville, which is why I waited, who remarked that they liked what was happening with that, so that was good to hear, and unprompted, you know, I was kind of surprised that they even knew who I was, but, you know, they stopped, and one was in the grocery store, and one was on Main Street, so, all right, thank you. So, all right, thank you.
Welcome.
Jen?
Well, I'd like to offer something, but you stole my points. You're going to miss me, Peter. No, just a great job. I mean, you guys are, you're all different but equal in so many ways of just trying to meet the needs of an incredibly needy population with shrinking tax dollars and more demands and less space than you need, and, you know, you're hitting it out of the park, doing what you can. I like the swans, too. Thank you.
I'm all set. Thanks, Kim. I always hear wonderful things about Centerville. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, for me, like the multicultural night, first annual, and then you mentioned kind of an emphasis on attendance, you know, joy for learning, joy for being in school, and then kind of getting, you know, nine o'clock is not 9:04, it's nine o'clock, right? And then just kind of being mindful and intentional about that, particularly at a young age, right? Do they just kind of get it in their mind? I think it's similar. We've noted like things like homework, you know, that you talk about, you know, they start doing homework early on, but, so you wouldn't, you know, I feel like at the elementary level, students, they still want to be in school, you know? It's like, the school's cool, it's good to be in school, but at times, you know, when there's that, when there's gaps and they're not in the building, it has a noted effect. So I'm glad that's something that you're focusing on, and nice job.
Thank you.
Can I go? Okay. I just want to make sure, everybody stole my thunder, so I have nothing really to say. No, I'm just kidding. No, excellent job, good. So if you've ever watched anything I ever talk about, like discipline and stuff, especially a couple of years ago, I believe that the building blocks start in all of your buildings. I'm just a firm believer that if you start, like, not discipline, but expected behaviors in school, if you start when they're in kindergarten or even preschool, and you, it's consistency. Any parent knows about, just the consistency. So by the time they get to be a teenager, if as a parent you're consistent, then it kind of, so expectations are the same. Natalie and I happen to have four kids who are all teenagers, and people are like, wow, that must have been crazy. No, it was actually really easy because first of all, I take after Natalie, so they're all good kids, and second of all, they, just consistent. So to me, the whole academics, studying habits, expected behaviors, the whole nine yards starts in all of, I'm not going to say it's the most important years because I don't want to insult the other schools, but that's where it's all, the foundation is set for all the way up through college and life. So excellent job. You're all doing the same thing. You're all, as far as that building block, that's kind of where it all starts at your level, and you're all not doing the same thing because you have different populations, but you're all starting those building blocks, right? Which is, to me, that's, society is based on the building blocks. We all learn, start learning when we're in your schools. So excellent job, keep up the good work, and nice seeing you.
Good seeing you. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, hi, West.
Hi, West. All right, well, thank you for having us tonight. I like a good opportunity to brag about Hyannis West anytime I can get it. I also, like Kathy would said, going later on, after this amazing team has gone, it made me realize how aligned and connected we all are, because I can probably skip half of this because it sounds exactly the same, but I think that's a really good thing. So starting with a culture of belonging, we use responsive classroom principles and practices to promote our positive school climate. So mostly through retirements, there's been a huge turnover at Hyannis West over the last 10 years. So the majority of teachers have no formal responsive classroom training, and like Beth, I think we took it over 30 years ago, but it's still tried and true as an evidence-based practice. This summer, we were able to send two teachers from High West to a three-day training, and they have brought a lot of information back to their colleagues, so there's definitely been a renewed interest in this. So we're sharing best practices for morning meeting, interactive modeling, teacher language, and creating classroom rules and expectations. Like my colleagues, we do have an all-school monthly assembly where we actually follow a morning meeting format where they, the kids all greet each other, they take part in sharing, like a turn and talk, and then either a classroom or a grade level will show an activity for all the school to engage in, so it's a lot of fun. And then I end with news and announcements about just kicking our day off in a positive way. So it models everything that the classroom teachers are doing in their rooms every morning. Also, we've adopted the responsive classroom principles as our own school-wide norms, which encompass how we interact with each other, our families, our students, and our community members. We also have reinforced and enhanced our school safety practices. Like we've said, the Youth Truth survey gave us a lot of great data. It's nice to have that year after year to compare apples to apples. We did really well. Our families and staff feel positively about our school. However, there was, safety was a common theme. Staff comments centered around space and facilities, which are space, thank you, the modulators are doing great, while families want more information regarding bullying and school safety practices. And as people have mentioned, the SRP, or Safety Response Protocol, has been adopted this year. We were trained so that we can have a common language. And so far this year, the training has come in handy as we've had a hold and a secure already, but it was great that we had the common language, the staff felt secure that we had it together, and that the language has been shared with students, with staff, and with families. We also are increasing our student voice and ownership. So through Learning Walk data, it showed that teachers are working super, super hard, but often they're doing some of the heavy lifting, and we need our students to have more of a voice, more turn and talks, more engagement opportunities by making their thinking visible and showing how they solve problems. So we're working as a school on that. And our access scores demonstrated, our multilingual learners showed high growth in literacy, but actually our oral language didn't grow as much as it did in the past. So we're really working on oral language as a goal as a school. So as far as a rigorous curriculum, like everyone else said, we're participating in the professional development for multilingual learners. We're implementing year two of CKLA. I have to say, with the guidance and support of our amazing literacy coach, teachers continue to collaboratively unpack units to ensure high-quality instruction and high student engagement. This year, we have an emphasis on building stamina and fluency for written responses and essays, as our MCAS scores show that writing was an area of need. In fact, we had a staff meeting at 7:30 this morning, bad planning on my part, but we actually, they started with taking, participating in an actual MCAS third-grade passage. It was funny to see, though, because like about a page in, the teacher's like, I can't do this. It was 7:30 in the morning, so probably a lot to ask, but it was a great exercise to do, to take them through that. So from kindergarten, it was our special, every licensed educator was there, so to see like our enrichment teachers go through it, to see our kindergarten teachers understand that by third grade, this is what they're expected to do, it was a really great exercise. So we'll continue to work on writing at our building. We're also engaging in math curriculum review, like everyone has said, and our teachers are really excited about that. The next part is on data-driven decision-making. Last year, we, our gen ed teachers and our ESL teachers participated in professional development with the author of the Co-Teaching for English Learners book, Andrea Hannigesfeld, and that kind of kicked off co-teaching in our building. We also implemented co-planning time, as that is a key to a successful co-teaching relationship and partnership. And as a result, students were able to remain in their classroom rather than transitioning out for ESL services, so they definitely feel more connected to their teachers and peers, and they're really thriving in their co-talk classrooms. We are, like other schools, are refining our MTSS process. This year, using Title I funds, we're able to secure another year with a consultant who supported our DESI Tier Literacy Grant last year. She helped us with holding productive data meetings, utilizing that data to make informed decisions and interventions. This year, she's going to assist us with refining that process to ensure we have strong Tier One instruction, effective interventions for both academics and behavior, and to enhance our co-teaching model that I mentioned previously. And finally, we're going to utilize instructional coaching to develop and implement effective WIN blocks, so What I Need blocks. Last year, under the guidance of our literacy coach, our third-grade team piloted a walk-to-learn approach. We're really all hands on deck, so during that WIN block, students would work with everyone who was available at that time. It was targeted based on what they need, based on looking at data. We are now expanding that to other grades, and that includes our special ed teachers, ESL teachers, as well as gen ed teachers. And our overall goal is to decrease the number of students requiring a formal MTSS process with a strong Tier One. We hope for that to happen. So I just want to give a shout out, like Mike you did, to all of our students, our teachers, our families, and our community partners who make this work possible. They really support us and work tirelessly every day, so we would love for you to visit anytime you want. So thank you. Any questions?
Jen?
Just, you know, a great job. I've known you for years and years and years, and the one thing that's been...
It's been a long time.
It's been a long time, and the one thing that's been consistent is your dedication to your role and your flexibility when it comes to dealing with special circumstances with kids, and your creativity when it comes to managing a million different spinning plates, and it's really appreciated. Thank you very much for your hard work.
Thank you.
Peter?
Yeah, well done. You got through that, there was a lot of stuff there, and you got through that very quickly, which we all appreciate. It's just a general thought, I taught for many a year, and kids who attended High West noticeably had always had a strong attachment to that school, so I'm sure part of that is you. Thank you.
Thank you. Andre?
Yeah, great presentation. Just wanted to talk, you noted the modulators and the additional space that you have, and, you know, I was out on the campaign trail, happened to be over, you know, and over at High West, and I said, you know, this modular, and when you turn over, more space, noticed nice, flat, clean roads.
Oh, the pavement, yes.
Yeah, you know, can you just talk about the modulators, how that's helped the building, and then, you know, it just, what I'm trying to say is it just looked nice, looked nice, well-lit, you know, stately, so the new additions that you have there.
Absolutely. I would just, I think one thing I would say, it helps, it feels like we can breathe. I would say that because it opened up our school, we can use our stage, our library isn't in the cafeteria, library can have a library space. So it was a game changer, and the paving was beautiful, I agree. We're just, we want to put some murals or some things out there, we just haven't decided yet. We want to tap into the high school art students for that.
Very good, so.
It's been great.
Look outside, you know.
Thank you for your support with that, because it was a long time, but it's been worth it. And we're able to have a NAC program this year at our school as well, and that's been a wonderful addition to Hyannis West. It was nice to have the space to do that because it's addressing a need of our students that we didn't have before.
Mike?
You're underestimating the amount of time. You're not giving it the justice, the amount of work you did on that. Excellent job, good presentation. I get one question, I've heard it now a couple of times, and I probably have forgotten, I probably knew what it was at one point, but the survey, what's the survey?
Youth Truth Survey?
Yeah, what is that? Can you just, what is that?
The whole district has it, so I think Sarah, you brought it to us. So Youth Truth, I think it's in our third, this would be our third year now. So it's for families and it's for staff, so we do one of, and it's once a year. And then, but it's just nice that we were able to have the same questions asked two years in a row, so we can really take action. And there's some open-ended pieces there that we can have feedback that we can act on, so.
Okay.
It's really been helpful for us.
I'm sure we were probably told about it at some point, but I just, like, I've heard it now a couple of times, and I'm like, I just was wondering what it was. I thought it was YouTube, and I was like, what, YouTube videos? Like, what, huh? I was so confused.
No, Youth Truth, it's mouthful, but yeah.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you very much. Good job.
Thank you.
Right, excellent presentation, and every time I see that sign, it feels so fun compared to the former sign, and I thank the Hooton family. I remember, you know, when they brought that to your attention, and it just livens up the school, and the energy is good. So thank you so much, I appreciate what everybody does.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Have a good night.
You, too.
Oh, wow, the props.
The ducks are back, but they're bigger this time. I think next year, we should start with the West Villages and go to Enoch Cobb. Sorry, just kidding.
Kathy knows how you feel right now.
And you can leave right after you do your presentation.
You'll remember.
Yeah, that'll be good.
So I just want to say thank you. I can't believe this is actually my fourth year with West Villages and representing the school, and I feel very fortunate to work with the families and the students and the staff at West Villages because they're wonderful. I will say that much of what everyone has already said, I'm going to repeat a little bit of it, but if you have any questions at the end, you can always ask. So we are aligned with the district vision and objectives, much like the other schools. We are focused on a culture of belonging, a safe and inclusive climate, and a shared vision of success. We are reinforcing and enhancing our safety protocols using the SRP, the Standard Response Protocol, and the staff just had another training from Sergeant Ross again today, he's our SRO. So we're tightening that ship up, and it feels really nice. We continue to invite families into our school for special events like Math Night, Story Night, and we are bringing back our Winter Wonderland in January. So in January, if you have time, hopefully it's not going to be too cold, because we do it outside, and it's absolutely spectacular. There's arts and crafts and reading, and the chorus will sing, so it's a really exciting event. We haven't had it for a couple of years, and we're going to bring that back to bring all the families back together again. We continue to monitor attendance to increase students coming to school. We had a little bit of improvement last year, but we hope to gain a little more traction this year with our monthly attendance celebrations. We celebrate monthly the grade level with the highest attendance. So we keep reinforcing it and making phone calls to families and trying to get kids to come to school more often. Our theme this year, and you can see our tree, the picture of the tree, which is covered with leaves and hearts, but our wonderful art teacher, Kelly Burge, painted that for us. But our theme is community care, and students were able to sign a leaf or a heart and tape it to our tree to show that they care about the West Villages community. So it's wonderful when maybe a student is having a moment of dysregulation, or maybe they're having a struggle with another friend, we're like, okay, well, let's talk about, did you put your leaf on that tree? I guess you said you cared about this community, so let's work together and fix the problems that we have. So it's been a nice talking point where you can walk over there with kids and see all the names on the tree. We continue to support teaching the zones of regulation for positive social behavior through self-awareness and self-regulation skills for our students, staff, and families. When we teach about the regulation, the zones of regulations, we teach it all at the same time, so the staff is hearing the same language as well. We aim to meet with families at PTO meetings monthly, and we talk a lot about the zones and the talk about positive behavior that we have with the students. But we're also offering this year what we called like a coffee talk, so that parents can come in every other month, sit in the cafeteria with us in the morning and have some coffee, and talk about the language that we use with the students on a daily basis around positive behavior and the zones of regulation talk. November is Consideration Month, and we are giving the little ducks that I brought last year to the students who are considerate to others. I'll talk about these big guys in just a minute. And we also celebrate our Artist of the Month by hanging their artwork in the front office for everyone to see. And again, Kelly Burge is an amazing art teacher, so she helped us create the tree, and then you can see all the students that had their artwork displayed and got the award for last month. And just because I love this tradition of the butterflies, I don't even know how they find the caterpillars each year now, because I feel like they're harder and harder to find, but they were able to find two caterpillars and release them just last week. So that's their little celebration in kindergarten for releasing their butterflies, and I think their little headbands are so cute. Last but not least, and this is a huge focus for us, is that we are developing our MTSS team and implementing an effective MTSS school-based model. Our goal is to build not just awareness this year, but trust. We want to create that trust within our framework and the process by educating not just our staff, but our families and educational advocates during our team meetings and our problem-solving meetings to ensure all students are getting what they need to succeed academically, socially, emotionally, and behaviorally within our MTSS support process. We always use data to drive our decision-making. We meet weekly during this meeting to discuss particular students who might be struggling in one of those areas. in one of those areas and what interventions or accommodations we can put in place for them, to support them. We utilize something that we started a few years ago with Dr. Ahern when she started the district, district accommodation plan. We all created our own school accommodation plan. We're using that at each meeting that we have for MTSS to kind of guide us in creating intervention supports and individual plans for accommodations. These are all general education things that we want to put in support of our students to kind of decrease all the kids being tested. And let's give them what they need before moving to that next step. We are continuing with our Lucky Duck celebrations to positively reinforce positive behaviors of students who are respectful, responsible, and safe. Our data from last year was that we, we almost cut in half the amount of behavior referral slips by using the zones and by doing these positive interventions and celebrations. We, you can see one of the celebrations there. And you can tell that I'm not a techie because that picture of the girls is so distorted, but I couldn't fix it no matter how hard I tried. We did create some staff parking this year. So, we created the Lucky Duck parking spots to highlight our staff who are so dedicated and supportive to our students and our school. So, they get to park right up front. We kind of worked a little creatively. And if you drive up, you can see that there's actually a duck painted on the pavement as well. So, so these big ducks that are here, we started later last year and we want to continue with them. These are the big ducks that we call Frick and Frack. And so, Frick and Frack sit in classrooms for about a week at a time. And they have cousins now too that are in all different colors. And the cousins will go and sit in other classrooms. And what they do is they're watching for kids to be doing expected behaviors. So, when we find out that there are classrooms or students that are doing expected behaviors, we announce them each morning over the intercom. So, we might, we might just announce a few students, but we also announce a few classrooms that are doing expected behaviors. So, it's kind of a fun thing and we are just keeping with our, our duck theme. We give duck stickers, we give the little plastic ducks. But it seems to be a really happy and fun thing and the kids have really bought into it, so. And the teachers have as well. So, it's a nice reinforcement to positive behaviors. So, thank you.
Thank you. Jen?
Yeah, same thing, very impressive, very creative. I'll do anything for a parking space, so I totally get that. Great job, thank you.
Who doesn't love a duck, right? I have nothing to add, Wendy, to the presentation, but I was just thinking after listening to all the, hearing from all the elementary principals, I was just, and looking at you reminded me how important these years are and how important these teachers are in these elementary years. And they make such a lifelong impact on the students. You have done it with one of my daughters. You taught her in two separate years. And you really did make a lifelong impact. She still speaks to you, fondly of you today, so. It's just, just kind of summarizing after hearing from everyone how important your jobs are. And, and kids talk about the teachers, especially the young teachers forever. Thank you.
Well, thank you. And right back at you because you had one of my children twice. It might not have been as easy, but.
Yeah, great presentation. Glad to hear the Winter Wonderland is, is coming back in terms of a way to bring the community together and something that was enjoyed and appreciated. We've crossed paths, you have a very active PTO.
Very, yes.
And that does raises funds, number of activities. I believe there's a skate night coming up, you know? I know it's been a busy time. I don't know if I missed it or if it's.
Not this weekend, next week.
Okay, so I'll be there, you know? I'm getting off the trail and, and election season, but no, just, I just think it's, it's a lot, but the proof's in the pudding, you know, in terms of, I hear a lot of positive things again about West Villages and being at those, some of those PTO meetings, you know, that they're involved and appreciating what, what goes on. Just wanted to note, again, these zones and the positive behavioral referrals and the reduction that you've seen, and just tremendous. Somebody like myself that's worked at the secondary level, intermediate level, I'm at the elementary level, this, we don't have zones where we are, we do things a certain way, but just for the students to have this language, it, I'm glad that you're seeing the reduction and the progress and the growth. So, you're the last, but great job, you know, as with your colleagues.
Thank you.
Excellent job. Good presentation, excellent job. Once again, like everybody else, just keep doing what you're doing. You guys doing a great job. And I still always, like I said, it's kind of the formative years, so to me, it's the most important years. It sets kids up for success. So, for all of you, once again, just keep doing. For your staffs, like anything we can do to help, please don't hesitate to reach out, probably through the superintendent, but honestly, good job. Thank you and have a good night. And thank you, everybody, for coming tonight.
Thanks.
So, how are those coffee talks? Are they?
Well, we're just getting them going and organizing them. So, we haven't exactly started yet, but we are going to start.
Hopefully, you'll get a good attendance.
This month and then start, like every other month, we're kind of easing into it. We were going to do every month and then we thought we might be biting off a little more than we could chew, so.
Well, I hope that families take advantage of it.
We do too.
Because it's, that's what I was curious about. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
To everybody, you're hitting your 13th hour and you're still standing.
Thank you.
But for tomorrow, I should have coffee there at every single one, one lattes or whatever. I don't drink coffee, but I know there's one that's, espressos, I think it is, gives you the big bolt. So, feel free, you can, you're welcome to stay, but nobody will criticize you for exiting. Have a great night.
Kathy, can I just say thank you to the principals?
Sure.
And just note how appreciative I am of each and every one of them. I think their dedication and talent is clearly evident and I'm just really proud. So, didn't want to end the night without sharing my gratitude for them. They do amazing work.
Item 5.2, MCAS results. Sarah?
Thank you. So, Kristin and I will, I think, tag team on this presentation. Based on some of the feedback that I've received from several school committee members on presentations in the past, we streamlined it and kind of are presenting the highest level information for you. If there's more that you're looking for, you know, we could take that under advisement and come back at a later point in time. But this is the MCAS results from last year. I appreciate Kathy, you noting that some of our curriculum efforts are going to take time to bring, bring change as subject areas like ELA and math are cumulative in nature. And so, these skills are going to be building. Although we are starting to see early indicators of success, hearing from our principals tonight about what they're observing in the classrooms, whether it's teacher practice or the students making connections, seeing results on the STAR data. And I do think that we have some highlights to show too in terms of MCAS, even though our scores are not where we want them to be. And we do expect, particularly with the investments that we're making and how hard everybody is working, that we will see an improvement in scores. And I think that MCAS is important, to Peter's point, not only because of comparisons from town to town, but I think it is an indicator and a way to measure academic achievement and growth. And so, it is a measure that we have along with some other measures. So, in terms of this presentation, we'll look at state and district trends. We'll talk about some of our highlights, positive spots for the district. We'll look at school, we're going to look at grade level data and the aggregate, talk a little bit about MCAS alt and what we're working on as we look towards continuous improvement. In terms of the state and district trends, we've broken them down by subject area and by grade. And the state trends are continuing to see, I think, some, some scores that, that are kind of lagging behind where they had previously been, including last year. The state is seeing an increase of three percentage points for grades three through eight ELA. And as a district, we've seen an increase in two percentage points. This is with students meeting or exceeding the expectations. In grade 10 ELA at the state level, that's been a decrease of six percentage points. And for the district, a decrease of four percentage points. The theory there is that with it no longer counting as a graduation requirement, we're seeing a decrease in scores overall because students are not necessarily taking it as seriously as they previously had been. But as I had mentioned, the scholarships are tied to it. Also, the seal of belligerency is tied to it. So, there still are reasons for, you know, students to do their best. Grades three through eight math, no change statistically at the state level. And we saw a decrease of nine percentage points. I think that goes to underscore the efforts we're looking to undertake for the math curriculum review going forward. Grade 10 math, decrease of three at the state level and a decrease of one here in the district. For science, at the state level, no change from last year to this year for grade five science, whereas the district saw an increase of two percentage points. In eighth grade, the state saw a decrease of two and we saw a decrease of seven percentage points for grade eight science. And then at the high school level, a decrease of 10 percentage points for high school science and a decrease of four percentage points in the district. Civics was tested for the first time, so we don't have comparisons year over year. And then in terms of accountability status, they break districts out for kind of grades, so to speak. It's not A, B, and C, but it's, it feels, it feels similar to that. A lot goes into accountability. It's not just MCAS achievement and growth. There's chronic absenteeism, there's graduation rate dropout rates. And so, as a district, we are making moderate progress towards our targets, our improvement targets that the department has set for us, along with 41.1% of districts. Some highlights, grade three math has seen a trend increasing from 26% meeting and exceeding to 42% since 2021. We're seeing a trend of increasing in grade six math from 21 to 27%. Grade science dipped 22 to 24, but has returned to its 2021 level at 36%. At the high school, we exceeded our targets for advanced coursework completion across multiple subgroups and all students overall. So, advanced, I wanted to explain what that includes. That includes, just give me a minute, I can pull that up. I took notes on my personal slides. That is the percentage of students in 11th and 12th grade that achieve a passing score and at least one advanced course, including but not limited to advanced placement. So, we had talked about some of our EP achievements in, at a recent meeting. Project Lead the Way, which we have at the high school. Dual enrollment or post-secondary credit. Chapter 74, approved vocational and technical secondary education programs and articulation agreement courses. So, we have exceeded the accountability target there. We met our target for high school dropout rate, which is a reduction from 2023. We met our targets for reducing chronic absenteeism. You heard tonight from all of the principals about the efforts they're doing to reduce chronic absenteeism. And so, we met the targets there, grades three through eight. And we met the target for MCAS testing participation. I was a little nervous, actually, about MCAS testing participation with the, with the sentiments kind of in the public lately, with it not counting for competency determination, just a little less investment on the part of, of families. I will give the principals a lot of credit for doing a lot of engagement work with families, families saying they want to opt out. There really is no opt out. The expectation is that everybody takes the test and the principal's doing a lot of education and outreach to families. So, we met our target for participation. So, on the next couple of slides, we have our ELA and math scores for meeting or exceeding the, the standard in grade three, four, and five. We have the values as seen here. I don't feel like I should necessarily read them to you, you can see. But our grade three is stronger than four and five, certainly. Grade six and seven for ELA and math. Grade eight and 10 for ELA and math. I will note, I'm particularly concerned with the grade eight scores this year. I think they're kind of notably lower. In science, these were students meeting or exceeding the standard. This is broken out by subject area, so blue being biology and red being physics. And M is not meeting, P is partially meeting. We have a smaller cohort of students taking physics compared to biology. In terms of civics, we have 22% of students meeting or exceeding the expectation in that first time test-taking. And then the MCAS alt. We have ELA in green, math in yellow, and science in blue. The PRG stands for progressing. So, students demonstrate a partial understanding that is below grade level expectations. EMG is emerging, a simple understanding that is below grade level expectations of a limited number of standards. Awareness, students are demonstrating very little understanding of the standards and core knowledge topics. And incomplete is insufficient evidence and information to allow an achievement level to be determined. So, most of our students are falling in that partial understanding, but below grade level expectations. Student growth percentile is another way to look at how our students are doing. The values here are color-coded. Green is in the moderate growth range, which goes from 40 to 60, where students are compared to similar test takers from years past. Yellow is where our values are below that moderate growth. And so, what stands out to me is students with disabilities are not kind of meeting that threshold of moderate growth. And then in math. I think we're seeing more trends along a grade level, grade four and grade eight not meeting that measures of moderate growth where six, seven, and 10 are. And some concerns for students with disabilities as a subgroup. So, what are we doing? What are we working on? So, the next slide kind of summarizes our current work and next steps. A lot of this has already been shared with you in the district and school improvement plans, but it really is a multifaceted approach, focusing on curriculum, making sure that the educators have the materials they need for teaching literacy and math. At, at some point, we will also engage in, you know, science curriculum reviews. There is a capacity and so, we're going sequentially through these key and targeted areas. So, we're in year two implementation of CKLA and the secondary math curriculum, initiating an elementary math and secondary ELA curriculum review. You've heard a lot about writing. That has definitely been an area of concern. There's a lot more analysis that goes on behind the scenes with our teachers, with our administrators, our curriculum coordinators. And writing is an area that people are really working hard on. Part of it may be the method around which the test is done. There's a very small text box that does expand, but students tend to type small amounts, so it's building stamina for writing. We have year-long professional development in targeted areas. At K-15, it's a focus on supporting our multilingual learners, but the. At K-5, it's a focus on supporting our multilingual learners, but the intentionality is to blend that with the CKA, CKLA literacy curriculum as student, as teachers plan their instruction. Grade six through 12, our educators are working on instructional strategies for student engagement to build on PD from last year with a focus on planning for instruction. And at the intermediate school, we've brought on a program called Keys to Literacy, which has an excellent reputation. It had previously been used in the district in order to bolster literacy, grade six and seven. The administrators are continuing to focus on attendance strategies, continuing to work. We could have the great, a great curriculum and great instruction, but our students need to be in the classroom and so focusing on, focusing on attendance, calibrating among administrators with walkthroughs and giving targeted and specific feedback to educators and protecting our instructional time, making some difficult decisions about field trips, for example, and prioritizing kind of that core classroom instruction. So those are among the, the many things that, that we are working on. So I don't know if there's anything you would add, Kristin, but we would, you know, take your questions or, or comments.
Kristin, do you want to add anything? Are you good? Okay. Jen?
So I feel like this is, you know, Groundhog Day in a lot of ways. I appreciate the brevity of the presentation because sometimes it's just better to look forward. And I, I really hope that with all the CKLA and curriculum reviews and the, you know, triangulation of thought and the consideration of all possible deficits that we get somewhere with this. Maybe a slide that would be helpful would be what our neighbors have for scores. What's our competitive set? And, you know, to Peter's point, it's the US News thing that I think puts out the whole like rating thing. And it used to drive me absolutely bonkers when I was on the council and it still drives me bonkers. But I wonder with, you know, Pierce Cote, if there's not a way to question the data and put out a different corrected message on efforts and things and kind of become part of a Google search that way. When people say, do I want to live in Barnstable? What are the schools like? Pierce Cote has a document that pops up. I mean, just because we're never going to change US News, right? But like, there's an argument for it and COVID derailed us, you know, as a species for at least a few years. And so there's a lot of catch-up to happen. But, I mean, I think that if we have, you know, a communications partner, we might be able to recover from some of that. And I think they do a great job. So I guess that's all. I mean, I really hope next year's better. You know, I know that Tyler worked so hard and Jason Canetto, when he was at BIS, they had, they worked so hard. I mean, they did the pie in the face thing. They were like, you know, playing basketball over there. Ah, you know, and still we come up with nothing. It's, it's, um, not nothing. We come up with less than what we wanted. It's, it's a little disheartening, but, you know, I got to say the kids are really going through it, you know? So that's it. Thank you for the continued efforts. I hope they amount to something.
Peter?
Yes. Yeah, I liked it. Much better presentation, I thought, this year, more concise. I, I, I like that. And I appreciate the principals stressing the need to participate in MCAS. I guess they haven't given this much thought. I, I appreciate the continued focus on engagement and attended strategies. I imagine it, it's, it's a hard job to sell the MCAS nowadays, I imagine. And you know what? I haven't given that enough talk, but I appreciate that. But it has to be done. I mean, we have to improve, improve these scores. And I'm glad we're, we're talking about it. It's, it's, it's just a fact. And people do naturally compare. You know, Jen just mentioned maybe a slide of other towns. I'm sure parents probably have looked at that already or, you know, how are Sturgis' scores? Oh, my goodness, you know, people do that. That's what they do. And they don't have much data to go on, but unfortunately, MCAS is the data. And over the years, I've really said enough about MCAS. And I understand, we are putting in effort. I understand that. And it does take time in seeing results, especially in changing curriculum and all this stuff. I get it. I just hope the school committee keeps noting the importance of striving to simply improve our MCAS scores here, if possible. So, thank you.
Andre?
Yeah, for me, just a couple of thoughts. You know, I'm seeing that for three to eight math, you know, there's no change statewide, but that we saw a dip of, of nine points. And then, you know, the eighth grade for math is, is 14%. You know, I look at that, that's, that's, again, their first year going to be in the high school, which may be the biggest transition of our transitions in the district. You know, so they're, they're, you know, 13 years old now, of a sudden they're walking around in the building with 18-year-olds. So there's a number of just social, emotional things that they're going to have to go through, never mind academic. And we see that, you know, for math, 14% in eighth grade meeting and exceeding. Is, in your view, is that the, the reason that we're overall? Is it the eighth grade maybe pulling down that entire subset of three to eight because the eighth graders are so low? Is that the most challenging? Because again, just looking at it statewide, there's no change. We're down nine percent. That's the biggest drop, I think, of, you know, where we kind of, kind of lose pace with the state. And do we think it's the eighth grade that's the biggest part of that? Or it's just overall, the overall subset?
I mean, I really do think it's a collective. I mean, all of our math scores, if you're looking at them, you know, are not, you know, grade three is a highlight, but, you know, really, it really is the group of those. And, you know, while, again, you know, we don't expect to see the change from a new program in a year, and we're in the first year of, of secondary math implementation, I am cautiously optimistic that we will actually see some change, particularly at eighth grade. Just again, some of it's anecdotal and, you know, I hesitate to say it, like I don't want to give that false hope, but, because it really does take multiple years. But we should see some increase next year with the eighth grade in particular. But really, six, seven, and eight are really settling in with the new program pretty quickly, which has been nice to see.
Mike?
Just a second. And then the participation that you noted in terms of the older students, just if it's not a graduation requirement, I'm just, I'm going to skip out on it. And you noted some of the efforts that have been taken to encourage them. And I think that's a good, you know, in terms of how we go about communicating this, it is helpful for the community to recognize that in the decision not to have MCAS be a graduation requirement, you know, it, you know, 55% said yes, 45% said that we should keep it. So it wasn't necessarily unanimous in terms of what we decided as a state. But, you know, it's still an indicator for your district, for those upperclassmen students, just because it's not. And so to see that we're having some, these students have the, there's the perception out there that it just, it's irrelevant. And so we can just, you know, that's going to be an immediate anchor. And then to the point that's been made by other members, I don't know, I'm just glad that it's being addressed and being rebutted, you know, and we're getting a different, that's, that's not the perspective of our students. Because I don't know if that's the perspective of students in other schools, that, ah, MCAS, I don't, I don't need to graduate, just, I'm not going to, I'm not going to do it or I'm not going to put any sort of real effort into it, which is almost the same thing as not doing it. If you just go, eh, X, X, you know, A, 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 your score is going to be essentially the same. So essentially, in-house, changing the culture, changing the culture. You noted that there are incentives still tied to MCAS that can benefit you. If you excel on this test, as we've noted, it triggers certain things, certain scholarship opportunities. Never mind, it's, it's good to, you know, am I out of line for saying? It's good to be challenged and take these tests. You're going to be taking, if you want to go into education and MTO. You're going to be taking an L stat if you want to go into law, if you want to go into medicine. You're going to be taking standardized tests to move forward in whatever career you choose. And so I think that's the narrative we need more of here in Barnstable, rather than, eh, you know, because I, you know, just in thinking about it, I think there's much more of a seriousness of purpose. We just need to, I don't, first of all, what, what other schools are doing is secondary, it needs to be in part, but it's secondary. We need a seriousness of purpose, particularly at the older ages, you know, regarding, regarding this test, because it's, it's affecting us, it's affecting us in the district.
Mike?
So I got a couple of questions. First of all, I, I know, and I'm probably literally the only one up here. First of all, good presentation. I'm probably the only one up here who didn't want the abbreviated version. And not, I don't really care school to school, but one of the things that it has us compared to the state, so you don't need to pull up data, I don't need numbers, I just want your honest opinion, is are these, are our scores better than they were last year? Better even, like, overall, not specifically, but are we seeing any improvement? Because this is only comparing us to the state. Well, I, I don't care about what the state's doing. I care more about what we're doing year to year and all of the programs we're putting in. Are you seeing any improvement?
I feel like at certain levels, if I recall looking at sort of the graphs over time, a leveling out. So while we were kind of steadily decreasing over time, there was like a leveling out at the younger, at the younger grades. That's, that's my sort of immediate.
Take back, yeah, and I don't mean to put you on the spot. I'm just kind of like, because to me, that's, because we're talking about, are we still like, we're talking about us? And like I said, there's nothing here that compares us from this year to the last year?
Yeah.
So next year, I, I like the abbreviated version, honestly, but next year, if we could do kind of a comparison year to year, because that's kind of what we're all talking about, is the year to year, like, are we seeing it's still going down? Because we've seen it going down the last couple?
That's where I think some of the highlights came into play, where some, there are some trends coming back up within the past couple of years. At the lower, at the younger grades.
Okay.
Three, I think we had grade six in there. So just kind of a leveling, almost like a leveling out.
Okay, so we're more like plateauing, we're not going down anymore. We're like plateauing, which you have to plateau before you go up.
That was my takeaway.
Okay, okay. And I, just that simple. So the advanced coursework, you, you mentioned that. So a bunch of years ago, there was a, there was a thing within the Barnstable School District. They wanted to have every kid take an AP killers. They literally wanted 100% participation, and I was 100% against that. And the reason is, is some kids have no interest in it. It costs parents money. And at the end of AP, you take a, a test. And in the, just for the public, so what happens if you get, what, a four or five on a test, then you can club a, a college class. You get credit for a college class, correct, Kathy? So the thing is, is in my, the reason I was against it was because, so parents are spending $150 on a course that a kid's not interested in taking the harder level. And if they don't get a four or five, they literally, I mean, I guess you get the, okay, you took a college course, you could see what it's like. But not every kid wants to go to college. So to me, it wasn't about the 100% participation, because I remember asking at a meeting, the principal at the time, I was like, how many kids are passing our AP courses? So this advanced coursework is kids that are actually passing the course, not that kids are taking them, correct?
It's passing.
Yeah, right. So they're getting at least a three on the AP or they're doing all those other court, like, they're doing dual enrollment or anything like that and they're passing courses, not just taking them. It's not a participation award, it's actually passing, correct?
Passing score.
Okay. So that's a good thing. That's a really good thing, because that got us away from participation and more into actually passing the course.
Yep.
Okay. And the one other question I have is this CKLA, we were talking about writing. I don't know anything about the program, you, you guys do. So my question is, is, is CKLA tackle that issue of helping us students become better writers? Kind of get my question?
Yes.
Compared to what we used to use?
Yes, there is a writing component. And I will say that we're working really hard this year on the writing component. Last year, the focus was the.
Reading and comprehension.
The reading and the knowledge units and the, the skills, the phonics. So now the writing is coming into play more.
Okay. Okay. And CKLA is, is, should, is a better program for writing? What were deficient in and should hopefully, hopefully help us because we got that program?
Yeah, the units, we were in a grade four classroom, you know, a week or so ago. And so the unit is built around a writing prompt that develops over the course of the unit. And so they are developing their writing skills and their writing development.
And be able to write longer and a whole nine yards.
Yes.
Okay. And one other thing, just as an anecdotal thing for, for all of, for you guys, I just, I tend to have more contact with the K through five level. And I could tell you, talking to a lot of different teachers in the K through five level who are doing this stuff day in and day out, they're seeing just, last year's class, which was the first year seeing, using CKLA to this year's grade, the teachers are seeing a large improvement in the, in the ELA portion. So I mean, granted, you're not going to see it on the test, like granted, but, but the teachers that are in the classrooms are like, wow, these kids are like, like, this is working. Like, teachers are even like, to the point where they're like, I can't believe after one year, this is working. Like, usually takes a couple of years, you know what I mean? But the teachers in the classrooms are actually seeing the improvement after just one year. So, which is heartening, because we spend a lot of money on it, right? So that's, that's kind of a not official grade numbers, but, but the people who work in the classroom are seeing the change.
Can I ask one question?
Yes.
So with MCAS not being required now for college graduation, I wonder if there's anything at DESI's level that could help with the US News ratings? Like, if they're not, if we're not being, if we're not holding our kids to those, I just feel like we're getting trashed. And I, you know, and it's indiscriminate. And if we are, so is everyone else.
And it's archaic.
Yeah, it's, that's the thing. Like, is there, is there any sort of a movement in the circles that you're in that talk about this with regard to, I mean, because it really matters. When people are buying homes, they're going to go to places with good school districts, right?
I really haven't seen anything from US News and World Report or any of the, that, that looks at changing the metrics. I haven't seen anything.
Well, I wonder if it doesn't need to come from.
And it's all AP and MCAS. It's all AP and MCAS. And, you know, I try to have or, you know, telegraph different things like advanced course taking.
Yeah.
Dual enrollment is a college-level class.
Right, exactly.
But it doesn't manifest in, in the US News and World Report ranking. And we have a lot of students, you know, taking dual enrollment classes.
It sounds like something that the school committee statewide should, should spearhead. Because education has changed. Things are changing constantly. And these same archaic methods that we're being judged by, are, are they really no longer relevant or very, their, their relevance is fading, put it that way. It's not that they're no longer relevant. But in the meantime, people are making decisions on buying their homes when they, when they Google that. I, I just think if we're ever, if we're ever out in front of things enough to be able to take a breath and talk about changing the chessboard a little bit, it might be interesting to talk to the state about spearheading something that says, listen, we don't want to be judged by that alone because we have all these other metrics. Here they are. So, you know, I mean, at least it's putting a line in the sand, right?
Can I, just to kind of follow on Jen? So how do, not every state has MCAS. Does every state have some sort of standardized test?
Yeah, they're required at the fed, at the federal level. Yep, to test in every subject, every grid.
Is every state, is it required, is it like, we've gone from having it be required for graduation, I assume there's states out there that it's not a requirement of graduation?
Yeah, I think.
That's not part of the Fed thing?
I think that varies.
You gotta have an option for a test.
Yeah.
Interesting.
Yeah. So standardized testing has been around for decades. So it's not new, it's just the instrument. The bottom line is, we're all, the decline in Barnstable started before COVID and then exasperated. And to be upset about our scores compared to the other scores and, and just think it's isolated because of COVID, every single person, every single school experienced the same thing. So I'm getting, I personally, I'm discounting COVID because I'm done with that. I would. Right. So I think, I think our focus needs to stay where our focus is on the efforts that are being made. And let's focus on our students and let's do the best we can and see how it all falls. Because trying to figure out and skew the picture to the public and mark it what they can dig up in DESI, you can go get these numbers in DESI easily and see what's going on, no matter what we decide to put out to change, change the view. So I think, you know, we've, we communicate what we're doing, the teachers are working hard, the students are working hard, let's just concentrate on making it better and let... And let, hopefully the impression will change because the outcome will change, is what I'm thinking. So I didn't really have anything else about this. I appreciate the presentation. It is on DESI. I don't know if you've looked it up. I did look, and you can see all the comparisons there, too. Anybody have anything else? All right. Moving along, item 5.3, accept the superintendent evaluation. So as quickly as I can, because it was done last month as well, I'll just recap what the process is. I did give Jen something to post so that people at home, if they're tuning out the verbal, they'll see it. So school committee members are required to use the DESI provided instrument form and procedures that are put in place to evaluate the superintendent. So the process includes that the superintendent sets her goals in three areas, professional practice, student learning, and district improvement. And that was done last fall after the previous evaluation. DESI provides, additionally, DESI provides performance standards that are in four areas, instructional leadership, management and operations, family and community engagement, and professional culture. The superintendent presents her evidence. She presented that at the October school committee meeting, and there were links to all of her evidence in that cumulative document, so you could get even more information going through the electronic version and looking at all the evidence, which we had seen previously because it was not, not new evidence. Then the next step is each one of us had one-to-one meetings with the superintendent where we could discuss her goals, her evidence, and where we saw the strengths and challenges, and provided some constructive feedback. So we all sat and discussed that, along with any of our concerns with her. Each member of the school committee completes and submits the standard evaluation that was based on the evidence provided. It's aggregated, and that was, the aggregate was completed by the school committee recording secretary. As documented directly on the evaluation form, DESI requires that a rating other than proficient requires each evaluator to provide a comment for any area, each and every area that was other than proficient, so that constructive feedback was provided in writing after the follow-up discussions. Really, the purpose is the aggregate evaluation should be fair and accurate, representation of the committee as a whole. And then the summative evaluation is accepted, or the aggregate is accepted by the school committee. So we did complete the evaluation, the document reflecting the comments is posted, a mathematical rating was used and completed as it's been done historically since I've been on the committee, and I believe that that was the way it had been done prior to
The last 10 years.
Right, Mike arriving. And, and it should be noted that that's not the be all and end all, there are different ways of doing it. DESI actually states right there that a rating of proficient practice is a rigorous expectation and a rigorous expected level of performance. And I'm pleased to share that Superintendent Ahern received an overall cumulative rating of proficient for all four standards on the aggregate, and that evaluation is posted in board docs. So before I turn this over, I just want to say, Sarah, that I do really appreciate the way that you are leading and engaging all, all the staff in the district, as well as those in the community. And I do thank you for all your hard work. I think that it's, you're doing a great job overall.
I'm going to move to accept the superintendent's evaluation for 2024, 2025, as presented in tonight's material.
Second.
Okay, have a motion made and seconded, all in favor of accepting it?
Discussion, discussion.
I'm not
Discussion.
Go ahead.
Okay. Start with me, or do we just win?
No, because typically there isn't discussion, there's never been discussion since I've been on the committee, Mike.
Uh, very much, like not about individuals' evaluations, it's public documents, so in my 10 years, it's never been, I won't say there's never been any discussion, but it's very, very, very 35,000 feet, not into specifics, not specific grilling, not interrogations, not really specific questions, it's very, very 35,000 feet.
It's, it's, it's the
If any discussion, there's been plenty of years where there hasn't been any discussion, because that's what our one-on-one meetings with the superintendent are.
Yeah, and it's really, the evaluation is from the committee as a whole. So it's not to debate the evaluation, it was posted, we've had the summative, the aggregate evaluation. Nothing was brought to my attention about postponing the acceptance of it at this point. So if you have a comment regarding something that would be appropriate, it's, but it's not necessarily, it's a public document, people can get, get it.
Point of order, point of order. Actually, to be honest, the only discussion we've ever had, or that I've ever been involved in, was more about the, not individuals, it was about the, the collective document. And like, it never used to be, you know, so you know how like in this, like all of our comments are all put in there? It used to not be put that way. It used to be put that the, Jen would take and try to make all of our paragraphs into one, and that was when there was discussion, was like, wait a minute, that wasn't like, I didn't put that in, that was more what it was about, that was any discussion about it.
Yeah, of course. For any agenda item, just so we're clear, discussion would be a part, according to the open meeting laws and Robert's Rules of Order. So thank you so much for clarifying how the discussions have taken part in the past, that that's helpful. Of course, we weren't going to have an interrogation or use ad hominem attacks, that that would certainly not be civil or appropriate, but just so that we're clear, you always have discussion within the open meeting laws and Robert's Rules of Order, so I didn't want us to miss that and therefore be out of order. I didn't, so I'll start, because I didn't see, I don't think anybody else has anything. But again, just to be in accordance with Robert's Rules of Order. I just wanted to, again, commend Dr. Ahern on this evaluation. As you said, it's all been proficient. My only question was, within the cumulative, just if, if a school committee member did have a rating of needs improvement or unsatisfactory, but you're saying within this proficient, that was kind of, overall it was proficient, but it doesn't mean that there wasn't a needs improvement or an unsatisfactory within these categories? I bring that up before you answer, Kathy, and thank you so much, because I did see for the comment that, in certain instances, the comment was that the available resources were underutilized, and that's why, that they felt that they were below the standard. But again, for proficient, that doesn't mean, overall it's proficient, which is great, and, and, you know, but there could have been some needs improvement or unsatisfactory within those.
So I did, I did state that there were five individual evaluations completed, which can be obtained by the public at any point in time. I have seen all five, everybody else had the opportunity to see it. I have seen all five.
I have too.
And I saw them after I read the aggregate, and there's, you know, I mean, there was one comment that was the comment you mentioned, and there were a lot of other comments on there, and so I'm not exactly sure what the concern is and for the public discussion, because everything that we had completed individually is available. If somebody wants it, they can reach out to the district. And the summative, which is appropriate to post for the public for the ease of access because it's the collective school committee evaluation. I explained it was a mathematical, a straight mathematical computation, and there was no change in any comment, they were, they looked to be, I didn't see, well, I did see the handwritten, they were verbatim transcribed. So there are five random comments, and there are no names attached to them, because the document that's posted is the committee as a whole. And if somebody wants to see who wrote the comment that was repeated here tonight, then they can request the individual documents. So I don't understand, I'm not understanding where you're headed.
Yes, thank you for, because, so you're saying that the evaluations for the other school committee members, we can request that, we can, and then that, because I, that was not sent out, I didn't receive that. I'm seeing now what the overall score is, which that's the score, and congratulations, I'm being proficient. But in terms of the other, we can just request it, and then we would see what everybody else said to, just to be able to quantify.
Can I just answer that, just because I'll be honest with you? I've been, I've been dissenting before on my evaluation, and you can do, you can request them, and anybody who want, anybody in the public, that's just not for us. That's for anyone in the public who wants to see how we, how we as individuals evaluated the superintendent can be done, yes, 100%. And you can grab it as any other person in the public, Barnstable can too.
I haven't seen it, and I'll request it, and so that I'll have that information. Thank you.
All right, so there's, motion was made to accept the evaluation and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries, and
Yeah, thank you. I always appreciate having an opportunity to respond to the evaluation, and that you give me a chance to do that. This year, I've always done it orally, but this year I have something in writing that I'm going to request get attached to my evaluation and submitted into my personnel file as well.
Absolutely. All right, thank you. Do you want to read that?
Yeah, I'll read it now. So I want to thank Kathy, Mike, Peter, and Jen for providing me with guidance and specific feedback on my evaluation. This included input on my goals, formative conversations at the midpoint of the year, summative discussions, and more recently, individual evaluation documents. I carefully consider the ratings and especially use the commentary provided for growth and to improve the district. Kathy and I spoke about the next agenda item, and I'll be formulating my goals for the December meeting, seeing as we have a new school committee member coming on board. As you know, I must acknowledge that the evaluation reflects the work of so many others, leaders and educators in this district, as my work is done through the supervision and influence of others through all of our nine schools. The evaluation tool clearly notes comments and analysis are recommended for any rating, but are required for an overall summative rating of exemplary, needs improvement, or unsatisfactory. This is also true for each standard which receives a rating. For the second year in a row, Andre's evaluation of me lacks substantive commentary despite ratings of needs improvement and unsatisfactory overall and on multiple standards. Last year, I opted not to comment. This year, at the conclusion of the summative conversation, I invited Andre to provide specific feedback for growth and improvement. The sole comment received in my evaluation has been available resources underutilized, consistently below required standard. The evaluation is not supported by any evidence, which I provided both at a school committee meeting, and then again, when Andre asked me to repeat it during the summative evaluation conversation. The evaluation does not reflect that conversation. I'm disappointed and would expect more accuracy, clarity, and detail in the final written summation. We provide as much to our administrators and educators using the same process throughout the district. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on, item five point
Point of information.
There's
Point of information.
Hold up a minute, please.
You don't run the meeting.
Andre, that's enough.
Point of information.
There's no point.
This is agenda item, excuse me, 5.4? This is agenda item 5.4, and
I have an open agenda item 5.4, and I'm in the middle of a sentence. I feel personally insulted by the lack of respect that I'm receiving as chair right now, and it's not productive. I'm starting to read the next agenda item, and I'm interrupted, and this is consistently going on all meeting, and I'm asking for the consideration of each and every member to let me announce the next agenda item and continue with the meeting in a civil manner.
Point of order. You made a attack on another school committee member via your comments alleging that you were inappropriately commented. Point, there's been a, there's been a comment disparaging the character of a school committee member during our meeting when that school committee member used the appropriate tools of Robert's Rules of Order to get further information. There's been a personal attack utilized. Chair, how do we, how do we approach that when somebody makes a personal attack? Do we need to?
I made no personal attack. I've, I've conducted the agenda item 5.3 the way that I have sat through years of meetings in the same manner that it has been conducted. And I allowed you to speak, and you spoke, and I reminded everybody that the evaluation, no individual in the district receives five evaluations completely and totally independent for a particular job position in the district. As a school committee, we work individually with individual opinions, and then when a collective document is made, it is the committees as a whole. Any document that we have worked on, agendas, meetings, minutes, there are public record and anybody has access to those. And so I haven't violated anything. I, we accepted the superintendent's evaluation, which essentially closes our part of item 5.3. I presented the opportunity for Sarah to make a comment because it's her evaluation in public, which is not done for any other staff member in the district, and she responded, and we're done, it's not a back and forth. The response was, was just a response. And so if there's, we're finished with item 5.3, I'm beginning to start with item 5.4, and I'm feeling very disrespected because I didn't even get out what the title of 5.4 is, and I'm asking for consideration to continue with the meeting.
Point of order. Again, a staff, a school committee member has made a disparaging remark in public relative to another school committee member who was operating in accordance with Robert's Rules of Order and the open meeting laws. You, you have the ability as chair to address it now, but I want to clarify, there has been a point of order regarding disparaging remarks in an open meeting by one school committee member. The chair has the right to address that.
I haven't made any disparaging remarks. I'm not, nobody's made, no school committee member has made any disparaging remarks, so I'm proceeding with the meeting. Item 5.4, the approval of the superintendent's goals for 2025, 26, we're, we would like to postpone this to the December meeting since there's a new school committee member coming on board. It seems appropriate that the five school committee members that will be doing and conducting the evaluation should be part of the goal setting. Item 5.5, suspend policy BGB policy adoption. I can, you want to make the motion, and then I'll give the reason?
Yeah, move to suspend policy BGB policy adoption, item 5.6 on tonight's agenda.
A second.
All right, so the reason for the suspension is that DESI required a November 1 submission for the middle school pathway exploration. The Superintendent Ahern had requested a waiver since we were having a meeting November 5th, which gave us the courtesy of not having to hold a special meeting. We were granted that waiver, but I'm, this motion is to suspend the policy so that we can do both the first read and the approval. Is there a second? Did someone second?
Yes, I did.
Okay, any discussion? All right, so have a motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, opposed, motion carries unanimously. All right, item 5.6, create policy JFA All right, opposed, motion carries unanimously. All right, item 5.6, create policy JFAE, middle school pathway exploration. This is a new policy that is under the directive of DESI. I can turn it over to Sarah, but my understanding during all of our policy meetings is that there was no policy. We're supposed to have a policy. We really are not changing any practice or procedure in the district. It's just documenting the policy that we should be following moving forward. Do you want to?
I can add to it, sure. There's new regulations that came out over the summer regarding making sure that middle school students know what all of their opportunities are. And the policy that was put together, there was a template that the superintendent from Cape Cod Tech had established. So there'll be some consistency around member schools. We then tweaked it because Barnstable High School has its own CTE program. So we tweaked it a bit to be inclusive of that. And you know, there's basically expectations around communicating with our middle school students about what their options are. They're provided with the opportunity to tour the technical school with transportation being provided by the hosting school. We are not allowed, and we are to mark those as unexcused absences. There's some language in there around providing records. They have some potential changes in terms of how they do their admissions and weights and lotteries. But we based this on, on the template that they had submitted to us. And then the other piece is that the state is really looking for districts to move towards MICAP, which is the career pathway planning program. We already have that in place, which is great. So that, you know, Kathy, to your point around not really changing our practice, and we've been looking to expand that. So new regs from the summer. And once you approve it, I'll submit it to the department. We already submitted the admissions policy, which you approved at the last meeting.
Okay. And, and the one thing that I should note is that we had key stakeholders, key stakeholders, staff attend the meetings and they also reviewed, you know, went through a lot of review with the key people that are in charge of implementing it. All right. So any discussion? All right. So a motion was made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries unanimously. The following seven policies are all first reads. They're all part of the MASCE policy update that each one of us received a few months ago. I'll start and try to briefly explain as quickly as possible. So item 5.7 is revised policy GBEBC, which is gifts to and solicitation by staff. The update, this updates the current policy to note that staff may not organize raffles while acting as employees and the district cannot be a sponsoring organization. And again, this is coming from DESI. Item 5.8, revised policy JJE, student fundraising activities is tied into that raffle and organized games is chants as well. So it's all the same update as applied to several policies that it's relevant for, for which it's relevant. Item 5.9, revised policy KBE, which is relations with parent boost organizations. Again, this is to add the language to clarify that should these organizations wish to organize fundraisers, they're expected to adhere to the law and any laws and regulations while organizing them. Item 5.10, an 11er tide. Item 5.10 is a review, is a revision of policy KI, visitors to the school. They, these are both updates that ensure access that to school facilities is covered by district policy and allows school committee oversight to ensure safety and security for the students and the staff. The current KI policy is being replaced by the MASCE. So when you looked at the materials, you might have noticed one was entirely redlined. And then there was a new policy. And we, as a committee, decided to adopt the MASCE policy tailored to Barnstable. Language was taken out of KI, moved into a new policy, access to buildings and grounds. So it looks like it's a very lengthy policy that's shortened, and it is because a second new policy contains half of the language. And then 511 is that new policy, ECAB, access to building and grounds. And it, that's the policy that contains the updates that addresses the public safety during the school day and also during non-school hours. And so these are all first, oh, and then 512 is the creating a new school food and nutrition, meal modifications. In practice, we provide meal modifications for dietary restrictions, but it's not explicit in the policy. This is a new policy required by DESI that just sets forth that we do it. And 5.13 is to create policy KBG, which is parent advisory councils. There are two parent advisory councils or committees that are mandated by state law. One is the CPAC, Special Education Advisory Committee. And the other one is the English Language Learners. And so they've been around. It's nothing new. It's just DESI now requires that we explicitly have a policy that states that we have this in what our district obligations are. So for anybody who has any concerns about any of the revisions or any concerns about the creation of the new ones, I'd like to say call Peter, but I can't. So I would say they can direct their comments to Kristin, Sarah, or me. And then we'll call a committee meeting and handle them. All right, any questions?
That summary was well done.
Okay, thank you. Finance and facilities. Item 6.1, facilities update, Doug, for Barnstable United Elementary School. This is a longer one. Thank you.
And good evening. I think you all got this slides. We're going to talk tonight about Barnstable United Elementary School. Thank you. And on the sixth slide, basically giving a little background and information on the school. The total square footage of that school is 146,430 square feet. It's the third largest school in the district, consisting of 80,414 square feet of educational space. The population, the student enrollment is approximately 723 students with 149 teachers and staff. There are approximately 36 home rooms out of 52 classrooms in use. The facility products that we recently completed at BUES, removed the overgrown trees and vegetation, shadowing the school, of course, making the, with our efforts to make the school less damp, bringing in the sun. We replaced the main heater supply and return pipe that supported the southeast wing. That was also creating some water issues on that southeast wing above the offices. We replaced the library carpet this summer with the new carpet tiles. We removed carpet from 11 offices in student counseling and replaced it with the quartz tile. Quartz tile is similar to what we did at West Villages. It's the new modern tile that doesn't hold so much moisture or hold a lot of things in it. The front athletic field has been aerated, seeded, and is now resting. Grass seed is actually coming up. We've been working on the irrigation system for next year. And there was also a new service line, a new service food line that was put in the cafeteria in the summer of 2025. And that was by the previous director of food services. Facility products that were planned, and I'll go a little bit more into the cost of these on the next slide, but we're planning on doing an installation of the playground mat system that's scheduled, that was scheduled for Friday. It's been now moved up to tomorrow. So the crew will be arriving there tomorrow. The school's aware of it. We've had to close down that playground for tomorrow and Friday to get this new mat system in there, which will make it a much more inclusive playground for all. And then future design and developments will happen with that, with that playground. We're planning on doing a complete replacement of the HVAC system. Currently, we're in the project engineering and assessment stage. I actually have a meeting with the whole team tomorrow. The door and hardware replacement, we're going to replace about 18 exterior doors. And also we'll do some front main entrance vestibule work. That work in the vestibule will include adding glass partition walls down the middle of the vestibule, new flooring, and to create a proper visitor management setup. Some of it kind of like what you've all experienced at the high school. Of course, the school will receive a new PA system, but that's part of the district-wide upgrade. On this next slide, I'm talking a little bit more about the cost of this. This is, this is planned for the 25-26 fiscal year. These items here below are coming out of the CIP request. We're looking at the engineering and assessment that I just talked about. That was already pre-approved in '25. That's $1 million that we're spending to assess the entire school, working with engineers, architects, and consultants. Then of course, the complete HVAC replacement that we're looking for in this year's request is roughly around $10 million. So we're asking for the $10 million. I think you guys heard about the 2.7 that we received. That's a reimbursement grant that we received. We're looking at additional grants for that, but this is a placeholder. Replacement of 16 to 18 doors, I talked about that. The 295 plus the $35,000 for the vestibule management system was a cost estimate. Bids are actually out and are due in tomorrow. So when bids come in, I'll know exactly what this is going to cost. But this is what we had budgeted when we picked off the seven schools that were on that list. Exterior masonry, weep holes, working with engineers on that. I'm looking, hopefully go out to bid on that in the next month or so. As to do all the masonry repair work, repointing, and then also taking care of all the weep holes, especially on the back of the building. Again, trying to get that building to dry itself out. And then of course, the playground mat system that I mentioned, that's coming in just under $50,000 for that playground. Future costs for the school, and I'm just going out five years because we are in the middle this year of doing a preventive maintenance program and some other preventive assessments of the schools. So I'll have a better forecast that can extend a little bit past this. But this was just, a lot of these areas, these items are based on the Collier report. And some of these numbers, as they get further out or more on the Collier, I've added to them a little bit within reason, just because knowing that inflation is going to increase on these costs. The school, of course, is going to need acoustical ceilings throughout. I put the age 2 and 30. 2 is because we just replaced a large portion of ceiling tiles in that school last summer, not this summer, but '24, going into that fall. So the remaining part of the school, roughly around $900,000. The gym floor replacement, it was on the Collier report. So that's in here because the floor is about 32 years old, which is basically the age of the school. Restroom renovations, as we've been looking at them and looking at them even at the high school, they're getting costly. So that's 2.3 million. Painting just the hallways and the main staircase, we were carrying $150,000. Then there's a power distribution upgrade. This number in FY '29 could change, depending on what we're doing with this HVAC system. So we're also, while we're doing that, we're evaluating the power needs for that building and assessing that. And RISE will be going in shortly to assess that. So this, this was on there. Again, Collier is to bring up the power distribution. A lot of the schools are going to start seeing that in the next few months that as I talk about them. We need to bring up the power distribution. We need to bring up power upgrades to continue to stay current with the current needs of the school and the equipment that's going in the schools, all schools. So that's for this school particularly. Install sprinkler under the overhang. Did not know that that wasn't there. But of course, as time comes, that's going to have to be installed. New flooring throughout the rest of the school, about $980,000. And then of course, in probably fiscal year '29, we'd ask for, to paint all the classrooms at that point. They've been painting them hodgepodgey, but I'd like, I think the whole school is at some point going to need a complete paint job. Locker room roof, this was on there. And if you guys are familiar with the school, the locker room roof, I had to actually look at it. The locker rooms are in the connecting building that connects the school to the gym. And that's a good sized roof. And the roof on the building is mentioned earlier. But now this is just that locker room roof. And then the gym roof recoding and repairs, that roof is a plastic type roof system. So this would be to recode it, repair it, and redo the seams that are on that roof, not a replacement of that roof. Locker room renovations, 350. Of course, we would do that after we do the roof. Windows and upgrades, obviously the windows at some point are aging out. They're 32 years old. So FY '31, I think this also could be something where we could put in a statement of interest at that time for windows and doors, I mean, windows, window upgrades and replacements. And then of course, with that would come classroom casework. Classroom casework is all your cabinetry, your bookshelves, your built, everything built in. Luckily, BU doesn't really have that much casework in there, but there's still some. So that, it actually has a lot more that I'd rather remove and not replace. And that's, if you're familiar with the school, the inside, there's a lot of kitchen sinks in there. There's a lot of, almost every other classroom has a sink, which causes also a lot of moisture, a lot of air quality problems that we've been having. So anyways, classroom, classroom casework. And then of course, the sewer, I was supposed to say tie into town. I'm giving it about $1 million. They had it like $200,000, but I'm not really sure what that, until we get closer to that. But of course, the following year, then we want to do the parking, milling the parking lot and repaving and striping and doing new curves. I don't really want to do anything to that parking lot until after because they're actually going to be coming diagonally across the parking lot with the new sewer. And at that time, goes down to the next lighting, there might be the need for new lighting in that parking lot, possibly new poles, a lot of other things that'll happen. And we'll take advantage of when that parking lot is under construction. And then of course, at that point, we might as well repave the entrance road coming in there. Grand total on this one, we're looking at in the far off next three to five years, $14.06 million. Any questions?
Thank you. Jen?
That's awesome. That's exactly what I think we should have so we can compare apples to apples to apples to apples across all the schools. And hopefully that can inform, you know, decisions made about new facility. If we, if we need a new school, if we're going to get rid of two schools, whatever, it can start at least the financial discussion on it. So we can look at over, and you know, a range of years. I just, that was perfect. Thank you very much for putting the extra time in and talking about things that are 10 years, 15 years down the road. That's exactly, I think, what we need. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Doug. It's great to see a picture of what's coming up. But the prices of these things just blow me away. I did some very quick math here. I think you're renovating the bathrooms for 2.3. I think it was, yeah, $2.3 million to renovate the, I think there's like 10 bathrooms here, maybe 12?
There are. And I think what we need to do and keep in mind when we, when we talk about renovating bathrooms, it's not like a home remodel. It is basically taking out the tile, taking out the ceiling, and putting your partitions and your torches. And that, you're right, it could even be more.
Yeah, my math came out to about $230,000 a bathroom.
Yep.
And then we have 10 of them. That's 2.3 million. $230,000 for a little bathroom.
You'd be surprised, but I mean, I would hope that we were to get that down.
Yeah.
I mean, that's also including staff bathrooms and everything else in that.
Yeah, no, yeah, I was, I was counting the bathrooms. It's, the numbers on everything. Some things I know more about the prices than other things, you know? The painting, 30 rooms for 1.24, it's like $150,000 a classroom.
Well, it's 50, 54 rooms, right?
Oh, are there 54?
52 classrooms.
Oh, 52, all right. I'm going to bring that down to about $75,000 a classroom then. I'm going to bring that down to about $75,000 a classroom then.
On, on, on an average, it sounds like a lot, but I mean, you're not, you're not going to spend that per classroom, but it's just going to ever.
I used to paint them for free. When I was a teacher, I said, I think I'll go blue this year.
Is that that room of yours in the 1600s, that red room? That awful, awful red room?
Yeah, 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 probably.
You gotta write a quote, man. Maybe you'll get the job.
Wow. Yeah, I'd do it like I come in a summer day and do the room for a bucket of paint. So that would be like $75,000 a room. I'm going to start, I'm retiring from school committee. I'm either going to be a plumber and do bathroom repairs or painting. Classroom's a specialty, I'll tell you. Yeah, these numbers, I appreciate, these aren't your prices, I understand.
No, no, but I, and of course, we would love to improve them and make them better. But you know, keep in mind, I'm giving you a quick synopsis. It's, I say classrooms, but it's going to be in classrooms trimmed, doors, hallways, I mean, not the, the main hallways, but there's going to be so many other areas that, once you get a contractor in there and we put it out to bid, we will be including everything we can possibly think of. So the first one was 150 to do stairwells and main common areas. But once you get into all the other little areas of 146,000 square feet, it's going to head up. Hunter?
Yes, thank you for the presentation. Again, to Peter's point, the prices, not that these things don't need to be done, but as, as I move forward over the next four years, just something to keep, keep an eye on. I think, thank you, it's comprehensive, it gives you an understanding going on into the future. Appreciate that. But again, some of these, just to know more, I'm, I'm coming from an academic background, so I don't have great vocational understanding, but I know people that, you know. So just to keep that in mind. The grounds, you know the number of things in the grounds. Are the fields included? Are fields included in grounds or is that a separate, a whole separate category?
The, the fields are going to be included in total separate category. That's a whole different PM program that I'm working on, and we're going across the whole entire district. We started with the front field here, which was the, basically the flag football fields. But, I mean, this is a start to what we need to do across the whole district. I mean, there's going to be a time that a lot of these fields are going to have to be addressed. And, and not just, when we say rest them, but resting doesn't just mean not playing on them. It's aerating them, it's adding soil to them, adding loam to them, you know? So now we're talking with some specialists, because I don't want to just say I'm going to rest a school or a field and just let the weeds grow. That, that's not what we mean by rest. We mean, put some, put some effort into it, put a little bit of money into it, and then let it rest.
Thank you for that clarification. I believe that's going to be appreciated by the community that, that uses these, these fields. Thank you.
Mike?
Peter, I remember the first time, I remember it was Centerville, they were going to redo the windows, and it was like $750,000. And I was like, are you kidding? Like, it's just insane how it adds up when you start adding a big building, how it like, because we're thinking all as homeowners, you know what I mean? So it like, and it's commercial rates versus, and like you do a bathroom, you got to jackhammer up the base, the, the floor in order to get to the piping because it's, it's just, it's just, it's crazy how like, when it gets into a commercial building, how much more it is.
And you'd be surprised at these bathroom renovations that you mentioned. We have a couple of schools that are even be worse, but BU could, could run into, you all of a sudden run into an ADA accessible situation where now all of a sudden, what you thought was just tile and paint becomes a whole remodel.
It adds up. Yep, yep. Yeah, so excellent presentation. Thank you. I have no questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Doug. Jen, I think what we'll do, what I'll, I'll request, at your leisure, no hurry, the two presentations, we had two, right? September, October? I thought we had two. One in September, one in October.
We had B I S.
Right.
And then what else did we do?
Oh, just B I S? Okay, thank you. So at your leisure, if you want to tack on just for the record, and then it can get reposted, the numbers for the other one. And then, if that formats, yeah, then, then we'll have all of them consistent. But, you know, thank you, appreciate it.
No problem. You're welcome. Thank you, everyone.
You're welcome. Have a good night.
You too.
All right. Item 6.2, approved appropriation for the purpose of paying feasibility study and schematic design costs and associated project management for the potential roof replacement project at Barnstable High School. Chris?
Thanks, Kathy. Good evening, everyone. We received some good news from the Massachusetts School Building Authority last week that Barnstable was accepted into their accelerated repair program for the potential roof replacement at the high school and at the intermediate school. So that's great news. If we stay with the program and we end up replacing the roofs at both locations, there's a significant cost savings that's realized by the district. So right now, when you received acceptance, it doesn't mean that we will actually go through with the project. What it does is it says that we'll commit some funding to do schematic design and conduct a feasibility study, to bring the MSBA in, to look at the buildings, to look at the roofs, determine what the most cost-effective method of replacing or repairing them is, and make sure that they meet the kind of longevity requirements that the MSBA has. The roofs have to be older than 20 years in order for them to be able to move forward with you in the replacement. So they do all that legwork, and then we'll accept you into the program. And at that point, you go forward with construction. So right now, within three months from our commencement date, which was really the invitation that they sent to us that we've been accepted into the program, that was Monday, the 3rd, we've got 90 days to appropriate funds for the schematic design and feasibility study. We then have 14 months to do that work. And then we have three months after that to get our final construction funds in place. So the motion before you this evening is an interesting one. It's actually just a, it's really just revoting an appropriation that was already made for the high school roof back in FY '25 that was part of the C I P plan. $350,000 is appropriated out of savings to do this very work. The MSBA has kind of stringent requirements on the language that they want you to use all throughout the process, yes. So really, as Mike said, we're rewording an appropriation that was already made. So if you wouldn't mind making that motion this, this evening, that allows us to be in compliance with the MSBA's required language. And again, there's no additional monies. They're already in place in an account ready to be expended.
So I guess I'll make a motion. Move that the town of Barnstable appropriate the amount of $350,000 for the purposes of paying feasibility study and schematic design costs and associated project management for the potential roof replacement project of the Barnstable High School located at 744 West Main Street, Hyannis, Massachusetts, including the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto the project. Which proposed repair project would materially extend the useful life of the school and preserve an asset that otherwise is capable of supporting the required educational program and for which the town of Barnstable has applied for a grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, MSBA, said amount to be expended, sorry, I lost my place, expended under the direction of the Barnstable School Committee to meet this appropriation, the town treasurer, with the approval of the town council, is authorized to borrow the said amount under Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, or pursuant, or 44, or pursuant to any other enabling authority. The town of Barnstable acknowledges that the MSBA's grant program is a non-entitlement discretionary program based on need as determined by the MSBA. And if the MSBA Board of Directors votes to invite the town to collaborate with the MSBA on this proposed repair project, any project cost the town of Barnstable incurs is in excess of any grant that may be approved by the rece, by and received from the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of the town of Barnstable. And that if invited to collaborate with the MSBA on this proposed repair project, the amount of borrowing authorized pursuant to this vote shall be reduced by any grant amount set forth in the project funding agreement that may be executed between the town of Barnstable and the MSBA.
Wow, I wasn't listening. Could you do that?
Remember, we had that big, long motion that time, and then it had to be rewarded, and I had to read it like three times?
Do you need me to second that? Then that's what I'll do.
Having a motion, a motion made and seconded any discussion.
Just a giant thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I should put this on. That's awesome. I really feel like this puts us in a good spot. Proactive, not reactive, well, a little reactive, but at least we're being proactive about our, about our reaction. So I'm thrilled about it, and it was really good news. It made me smile. So thank you, everybody.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. All right, now, take a breath. Item 6.3.
Want a break?
No.
Approved appropriation for the purpose of paying feasibility study and schematic design costs and associated project management for the potential roof replacement project of the Barnstable Intermediate School.
Move that the town of Barnstable appropriate the amount of $350,000 for the purpose of paying feasibility study and schematic design costs and associated project management for the potential roof replacement project of the Barnstable Intermediate School located at 895 Falmouth Road, Hyannis, Mass., including the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto the project. Which proposed repair project would materially extend the useful life of the school and preserve an asset that is otherwise incapable of supporting the required educational program and for which the town of Barnstable has applied for a grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, MSBA, said amount to be expended under the direction of the Barnstable School Committee to meet this appropriation, the town treasurer, with the approval of the town council, is authorized to borrow said amount under Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, or pursuant to any other enabling authority. The town of Barnstable acknowledges that the MSBA's grant program is a non-entitlement discretionary program based on need as determined by the MSBA. And if the board, MSBA's Board of Directors votes to invite the town to collaborate with the MSBA on this proposed repair project, any project cost the town of Barnstable incurs in excess of any grant that may be approved by the received, by and received from the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of the town of Barnstable. And that if invited to collaborate with the MSBA on the proposed repair project, the amount of borrowing authority pursuant to this vote shall be reduced by any grant amount set forth in the project funded, funding agreement that may be executed between the town of Barnstable and the MSBA.
I'll second.
And that's coming from a person who hates reading in public.
All right, so a motion was made and seconded any discussion. All right.
Kathy, if, if I may, I just want to make sure that the committee's aware, this is for the intermediate school. This is a new appropriation. There's no existing appropriation in place for this particular project. We were accepted or invited, excuse me, for two projects. High school had the appropriation already, this one does not. So this would be $350,000 coming from the school savings account to fund the feasibility and schematic design.
Nice, ask a question.
Sure.
So just, I forget where we're at. What do we have in our school savings account at this point?
So our free cash for the whole, for the whole town just got recertified or just certified last month from the D O R. The town was fortunate enough to have a significant amount of revenue that came in over our estimates.
Good.
So the school savings account is now back up to $14 million and change. I'll get you the exact number.
No, no, that's good, that's good. I just, I was thinking around six, so the, okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item 6.4, approve the use of reserves for capital improvement projects culinary.
Thanks, Kathy. We're before you this evening with, I guess, an appropriation request, but maybe what I'll do is I'll turn it over to Sarah to give you a little bit of background on the, on the project and maybe discussion about a path forward.
Thanks, Chris. So there's a memo in your board docs that Doug put together so Doug can answer some questions as well. This is actually the third request for an appropriation for culinary. There was an initial request as the design was coming together. It was looking like it was a bigger project, and so we had asked for an additional appropriation of, to, to come to, I think, $950,000 total. And that was the estimate that the architects had given us with their design. So then the design goes out to bid, and the bids recently came back, and Doug has detailed what those bids had included, but they are significantly higher. Doug has spent quite a bit of time doing his due diligence with the architect, going through each bid to see if there was something that was duplicated or overlooked, to really understand what, what the bids entailed. And really, what it comes down to is that the culinary project as conceived, and Doug can maybe talk, if you want to know a little bit more of the details there with the architect, is, is going to be significantly more than what the estimates were. So we had a conversation, the three of us, about what to do, and felt that it was a priority at the school committee level a couple of years back with the capitalist in that it would be most appropriate to present you with the, I think, dilemma, which is a, it's a more, much more expensive project than we had originally conceived, to see which direction you wanted to go. So what this would be, would be an additional approval of, of a thousand, I'm sorry, a million dollars from our reserves for the culinary kitchen. If you were to approve it tonight, it would then go to the town council for their approval. We do have the bidder willing to kind of extend, per procurement, extend their bid out a little bit into the future while we, while we, should you approve? Chris, did you want to say anything else?
No, just about the, the timing related to when a contract would be signed and the no guarantee that the lowest responsible bidder has to retain their, their bid. So if they decided not, there's potential that we would have to go back out to bid.
Okay. Everybody understand that?
I do.
Yeah. So, I mean, this culinary project, I remember it was when I first came on, because I remember doing the tour, and Mike Lambert went over and took a look at 4C's because he was trying to envision some options when it was first going out. So, I mean, that's a good six, six years. So it's not surprising that the bids came in. I was not surprised to see there was a change. It is a priority project because the current, the current kitchen is not in compliance. And so it really needs to be, can't be a project that's postponed. All right, so Mike, do you want to read it?
Sorry, I was daydreaming there. Move to approve, approve use of $1 million of reserves for capital improvement project culinary kitchen at Barnstable High School as presented in tonight's material.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Jen?
I just have a question. I mean, I realize it's six years in the making. It's like, the idea of going back to redesign to try to come in at a lower level, is that just not feasible?
No, we definitely looked at all of that. And I think what was, what, when it was conceived, it was conceived to be on the very, the low and the cheap. And it was, what I've learned is that, oh, we'll just use the existing HVAC that's on the roof. Well, right now, that existing HVAC is barely handling the classrooms around it. I can't have that HVAC handling this brand-new culinary. So that added $450,000 to the project.
There you go. That, that makes sense to me then.
Right. And, and then the, with the location, ah, it's a great location, they've got the square footage. Well, guess what? That's on a slab, and we have to cut all the way across the hallway to get into the basement to get to the utilities. So it's, these unforeseen's were there as we tried to, you know, value engineer the project, and I, and I tried. And it was just, a lot of things were just never thought of.
All right, thank you. Yep, it seems we were.
Mike?
How long is a commercial kitchen? Like, what would your thought process be on how long this kitchen will last?
It should last quite a long time. I mean, the appliances are like any typical.
Yeah, yeah.
And also, keep in mind, the exhaust hood on this thing is, is a huge ticket number. It's the exhaust hood that's, it's, you know, almost the whole center of this room. We tried to take out the offices, we tried to take out the bathrooms. Those are tiny.
Right, that wasn't the money, right.
That, that wasn't where the money was. So this kitchen should last quite, quite some time. I mean, we may have to upgrade some appliances.
Right, like any kitchen.
But, I mean, it's going to be done and done right, so.
That's the point.
Yep.
Are they induction stoves that you're putting in?
I'm not sure.
It's a commercial kitchen. It's, it's for their culinary arts, so currently, if you looked in that space, it had household stoves.
Oh, I've been, I've been in that space, yeah.
It's, it's meant to be, the culinary arts program, I don't think they're going to have the same exact setup, from what I understand, when I remember.
No, it's gonna be like an industrial, it's gonna be like a chef's kitchen. You're gonna, you're gonna walk in and think you're gonna.
So you're gonna have gas flame in there?
You're gonna have gas flame in there, that's why the, that's, that's why the hood above it is so massive. You're gonna feel like you're in the back room of, of any restaurant in town.
Yeah. All right. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Having a motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 6.5, the student activity accounts approval. Chris, or, do you wanna frame it, or, doesn't matter?
Just annual approval of the student activity accounts in order for them to be operational. We do need the high schools. We are still working with them on collecting all the background material. You'll see them at a future meeting, but the BIS list of clubs is all set, and has been reviewed with Sarah, Tyler, and Erica.
Okay, Mike?
Move to approve the Barnstable Intermediate School student activity accounts as presented in tonight's material.
A second.
Discussion. Having a motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item 6.6, appropriation from the Student Activity Undesignated Reserve Fund. Mike?
Move to appropriate $100 from the Student Activity Undesignated Reserve Fund for the purposes of, oh, revenue fund, sorry, for the purposes of purchasing a safe for the deposit clerk.
I'll second.
Okay. And Chris, we heard about this before, but it's, it's a safe for the money for the clerk.
The person who's the deposit clerk.
Any, any discussion? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item 6.7, approve the accounts payable warrant, fiscal year 26, warrant number 19.
Move to approve accounts payable warrant, FY26, warrant number 19, in the amount of $1,28,157.61.
Second.
Having a discussion, having a motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. The consent agenda. Items 7.1 and 7.2. Tonight's consent agenda includes the approval of the school committee meeting minutes of October 1, 2025, and the fiscal year 26 grants, gifts, and donations.
Move to approve the items in the consent agenda as presented in tonight's materials.
And tonight's consent agenda includes the approval of the school committee meeting minutes of October 1, 2025, and FY26 grants.
She already read that.
I read that.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I just drifted off.
No, no, 'cause to be honest with you, I've done that before, and then she was like, no, you don't have to read that, you have to read the bottom part.
It's getting late. Second.
Okay, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. So.
Yes, my slides, Jen?
So, you saw the memo?
Correct, correct, Kathy. I, I did see the memo.
So, I just wanna frame this because an email was sent to me about the, from a public member of the public who had a question, so I'm hoping you can address the question. I asked if you wanted to postpone this and then give two presentations, but you would like to give your presentation, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, a member of the public wanted to know if you're continuing to show pictures of a student from New Bedford, and whether or not the children's parents sign permission waivers for the children to be in the pictures.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. These are my, my school committee comments. I just want the public to be aware. And that the pictures that I use from the slides are all publicly available. Many of them come from our district website that does a tremendous job, and other public sites. So they're already in the public, people have made them public, and then, and then I use them, and so they are appropriate, you know, they are legal. And it's to inform the public about the tremendous things that are taking place in Barnstable Public Schools. Just, again, to, to clarify, school committee members, our public comments, we stand by them, and if there's an issue, then we take the hit. And if it's great and informs the public, then it's great. So, I'm aware of the, the comments from the committee, uh, community. I take them to heart, but these are all public doc, uh, comments, excuse me, public photos that I'm using. And so again, Barnstable, we're a large, we're diverse, and we're a dynamic district, and every month, there are a host of outstanding things that are going on. So to begin, this is the Lucky Duck celebration. It was noted earlier at West Village's Elementary, these students are recognized for showing caring in the month of October, and enjoyed some fun, some fun playtime. This is at BWB, where they had World Smile Day. BWB, this was a World Smile Day. We're gonna move over to Barnstable Intermediate School, where this is our chorus in action, performing in the cafeteria for, let's, performing in the cafeteria for their fellow students and staff members. This is our outstanding chorus at Barnstable Intermediate School. This was an event that took place at the Adult Community Learning Center, where our local impact students, as well as our multilingual learners, had the opportunity to be visited by members of the Barnstable First Responders. We wanna thank them for their service and their dedication. Massachusetts State Representative Stephen Ziaros joined in recognizing these everyday heroes. And so our students, our impact students, our multilingual learners, getting a chance to spend time with our first responders, and we, we, we thank them. This was noted, this is the Education Pathways event that took place. This was a regional field trip for students who are considering education and already currently in Barnstable Public Schools, talking about growing our own. Very fortunate to have State Representative Kip Diggs, next slide, to give a, a talk about our future potential learners and the things that they need to do to give back to the community. This is the Barnstable High School Education Pathways Program. Our high school chorus took a trip to Bridgewater State University. Yes, indeed, they did. And they represented our school with the utmost professionalism. 32 students sang from 9:00 AM until 8:00 PM, with breaks for food mixed in. The day was culminated with a concert, including 300 students from 22 different high schools in southern Massachusetts and Rhode Island. Outstanding job by our Barnstable High School chorus, many of whom will be participating in our upcoming school play. This was at the high school where they had an athletics activity, school-wide, where students were able to pick between a range of different activities. We had volleyball. Sorry, it's holding a bit here. We had flag football, but again, talking about choice, the students at Barnstable High School participating in a number of athletic opportunities during the school day. Gonna move over to the next slide, it's holding. This was the last, we're gonna conclude here. I know the meeting's running long. This is Teacher Appreciation Day, consistent with our football team. Teachers wore the jerseys for their students, and it was a good day of school spirit and enthusiasm. And once again, this is a long meeting, but I hope to see everybody at the home football game on Friday against Doherty School. This is our Barnstable Unified Team in a matchup against Dennis Yarmouth. Great crosstown matchup, they're doing tremendous. This was Pride Day for our field hockey team. As was noted, that qualified for the state tournament. This was their Pride Day, congratulations. This is our girls' cross-country team that recently participated in the Frank Mooney Invitational. And a shout-out to our volleyball team, another outstanding season, got a home playoff victory as they advanced. A tremendous job to our volleyball team and all of our student athletes. Thank you.
Item 8.1, adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Having a motion made, made and seconded. Roll call vote, Jen? Peter?
Yes.
Andre?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And I vote yes.